Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to go to Agenda Item Number One. Roll Call.
Mr. Bishop?
Present.
Mrs. Condon?
Present.
Mr. Jovian?
Present.
Mr. Lozo?
Present.
Mr. Olivo?
Excuse.
Dr. Page?
Present.
Mrs. Quinney?
Present.
Six present, one excuse.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the Southbridge School Committee Meeting. Robert G. McKinnon, Council Chairman, Tuesday, August 11, 2015, 7:00 PM. I'd like to have everybody stand for their pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the Republic of Kansas. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to the Consent. Excuse me. Number Three, Public Input. Is there anybody from the public that would like to address the school committee? If not, moving on to Agenda Number Four, Approval of the Consent Agenda. We're going to pull Agenda Item Two, June 1, 2015 Budget and Finance Subcommittee, and put it with "School Committee Actions" under P. If everybody's all set with the consent agenda, moving on to Number Five, Chairman's Announcements. I would just like to make a couple comments. It's been a very quick and brisk approach to opening of school. I'd like to commend the school committee and Mr. Bliss on the work ethic on what went forth in the very short period we've been here. And with that in place, we're gonna hopefully get everything done that was supposed to get done before the opening of school. And it's nice to see the administrators here tonight as a unified team ready to turn this district around. One other item. I'm gonna request later on to have a committee of the whole set because on the 17th, I would like the school committee to give the direction to the Superintendent Search Committee, which we'll be confirming later on in the agenda, so we can give them the parameters on what we need done as a committee answering to the school committee. That's it for my announcements. Moving on to Presentations. Introduction A, Ms. Kathleen Catarat, Principal of West Street School. Ms. Catarat?
Thank you. If I may introduce Ms. Catarat, I'd be going to thank you, Mr. Lozo. I appreciate it very much. It's with great pleasure that we introduce Kathleen Catarat as the new principal of West Street School. We sent out a communique about this a few days ago, but we definitely want to congratulate Kathleen. Ms. Catarat's 15-year tenure with the Southbridge Schools, during which time she served as a classroom teacher, an interventionist, a leadership team member, literacy specialist, leadership coach, and all those experiences are highly impressive. Ms. Catarat worked tirelessly during her time to earn the respect of her colleagues throughout the school system. In addition to an impressive track record of proven success and measurable outcomes for students, Ms. Catarat brings to West Street School a deep-seated commitment to and love for the Southbridge Schools. She shares deeply and cares deeply for the community and for our students. Kathleen was the nominee from the search committee convened, and we thank the members of the search committee who helped us in advancing the candidate, Catarat, who is now principal of West Street School. Congratulations, Principal Catarat. (APPLAUSE). Our tandem with the announcement and the appointment of Ms. Catarat, we also, it gives us great pleasure to introduce Mrs. Maria Murray as the Behavior Interventionist Assistant Principal at West Street School. Congratulations to Mrs. Murray on her recent appointment. Mrs. Murray currently works at West Street School as an instructional resource specialist. Prior to assuming that post, Mrs. Murray served as a classroom teacher and as a behavior specialist at the school. The interview committee cited her clinical experience as an interventionist and her proven track record of curriculum and program development as reasons for advancing Mrs. Murray as a candidate for an administrative position at West Street School. Congratulations, Mrs. Murray. (APPLAUSE). And to echo Mr. Lozo's comments, I could not be more proud of the administrative cabinet. It's not my efforts, it's a team effort, and thank you to the school committee, but most dearly thank you to the administrative cabinet. We had an incredible retreat last week. I think there's a resounding sense of enthusiasm and momentum, and it's absolutely terrific having everyone here with us this evening behind a mic and ready to answer questions. Thank you.
Moving on to Six B, Accelerated Improvement Plan Quarterly Progress Report, Fourth Quarter. First, Ms. Laura Rashan, District Planning, Implementation, and Monitoring Lead, Center of District and School Accountability. Also, Mr. Rob Curran, Director, Center of District and School Accountability, DESI.
Thank you for having us. My name is Rob Curran. I'm the Director of the Center for School and District Accountability and the Director of Education Data Services at the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Thank you again for having me here. Some new members since the last time we were here, and I appreciate the opportunity to present along with my colleague Laura Rashan tonight to you. We are here today to talk to you about the Accelerated Improvement Plan and give you an update and a report out on our last quarter of the school year. In addition, I'd like to start out by just, because we have some new members, just to be a level set, everybody, to make sure that we're all on the same page from understanding of how we got here to this point. This is gonna be a review for many of you, but I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page, that we have a common understanding of where we're coming from when we're doing this report out. So as you know, back in September of 2004, the Board of Education at that time, it is now the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, but the Board of Education at that time declared Southbridge to be, quote, "underperforming." That was under the previous law. And at that time, that designation was made in September of 2004, and since then, Southbridge has been under the designation of "underperforming," up until the point of 2010, when the department redid our accountability system and placed all schools and districts into levels. At that point in time, the "underperforming label" became a designation of being in Level Four. The district has been in Level Four since that point in time. That is a Level Four designation by the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. There are two ways in which a district can be placed into Level Four. The first is by that designation of the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, or the overwhelming majority of districts in the Commonwealth are placed in a level according to their lowest-performing school. So whatever the lowest-performing school of the district is, then that is the level of the school ranging from 1 to 4, depending on the lowest-performing school. But in Southbridge's case, although there is not a Level Four school, the district has been placed in Level Four by action of the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. As you can see here, the schools here are listed for which we have provided Levels Four for the Southbridge Public Schools, and you'll notice that all three schools are in Level Three. In addition, and this is data that we have shown before, and I'm just showing this for review purposes, all three schools are in the lowest 10% of all schools in the Commonwealth within their grade span. So the way to read that is for all middle high schools in the Commonwealth, and there aren't as many of those as there are for 9 through 12, but for all middle high schools in the Commonwealth, the Southbridge Middle High School is in the eighth percentile of all middle and middle high schools in the Commonwealth. Likewise, for Charlton and West, they are respectively in the sixth and seventh percentile of all elementary schools in the Commonwealth. Just to level set, everybody, so we are, that is the 2014 level. The 2015 levels will be released later on this fall. As you know, there was a choice to be made by all school districts in the Commonwealth for the 2015 school year, where they chose to take either Park or MCAS, and Southbridge chose to take MCAS. And those data are on different release cycles, so we won't be releasing full accountability results for the state until both sets of those data have been released, and that won't happen until later on this fall, as opposed to the traditional release of September. So we will be releasing the MCAS data, but not the school and district accountability that we come out from those MCAS data and the resulting levels of the schools. However, even when we do release those MCAS results and the school and district accountability levels, Southbridge will remain in Level Four, as I mentioned, because of that designation by the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. In addition to the levels, we have provided additional, all three schools are what we've considered to be focused schools because of they have particular subgroups that are among the lowest performing in the state. I've listed them up there for you, no need to read them, but in each school, there are particular subgroups that are among the lowest performing in the state and have therefore provided each of the schools with the designation of being a focused school because of the low subgroup performance in addition to low performance in the aggregate. Again, just as a final bit of a level setting, just to talk, just to show where we are in terms of proficiency on the MCAS exams, as I mentioned, 2015 results have not been released yet, but as of the latest results, 43% of students in Southbridge were proficient or higher on the ELA MCAS, 35% in math, and 27% in science. I have noted that on the far right, you'll see that those numbers represented an increase, actually, from 2013, and the 2015 results, as I mentioned, are forthcoming, and we hope to see an increase in those results. I'm gonna now turn the presentation over to my colleague Laura Rashan, who will walk through some introductory slides on the Accelerated Improvement Plan, just to, again, bring everybody up to a common understanding of what the Accelerated Improvement Plan is. She will then follow up with a specific report out on the last quarter for Southbridge Public Schools for the AIP, and then I will come back and talk about the district review that is gonna be forthcoming for Southbridge Public Schools. We are happy to take questions, as we have in the past, for any questions you might have along the way, but that's how we will proceed with the rest of the presentation. Thank you.
So the Accelerated Improvement Plan initiative is an improvement initiative sponsored by the department. It is required for districts that have been designated Level Four by board action, as Rob described. The theory of action of this initiative and this intervention is that if a Level Four district can define a narrow set of strategic objectives to accelerate student learning, execute well-defined initiatives with a relentless focus on implementation, and systematically monitor the impact of those initiatives to inform mid-course corrections, then outcomes for students will be transformed. So that's really the theory that guides all of our work around the AIP process, the Accelerated Improvement Plan process. So it's, we talk about AIP as being both a plan and a process. The plan is the document itself. I'm sure you're all familiar with what Southbridge's AIP looks like, but it includes three to five objectives, and this is true of all Level Four district AIPs. Those objectives can be thought of as sort of the main buckets of work. Each objective has between two and four initiatives, which are the main strategies that will achieve each objective, and then under each initiative, there are specific action steps and benchmarks, and those benchmarks are goals for changes in adult behavior, so educator practice, as well as student outcomes. So we pay very close attention to whether the action steps are being implemented and whether the benchmarks are being met, and whether there's progress toward those benchmarks. The AIP process is really everything surrounding that actual document. So first of all, there's the implementation of the plan. This is different than many other plans that districts end up doing because we really require very careful execution. It's not something that can just be written and put on a shelf. It's something that we provide support in the form of plan managers. We also provide external public monitoring, and we continually revisit and continually ask questions about what's happening with the AIP in the district. So part of that monitoring means that we have a department monitor who is on the ground in the district two to three days a month, meeting with district leaders, visiting schools, and observing activities, and that also includes doing quarterly reports. So that leads us to where we are now, the quarterly report focused on the most recent quarter, April through mid-July. So as Rob mentioned, I'll just give you a brief overview of this report, and we're happy to answer questions about this. I also wanted to mention that Patricia Williams, the AIP monitor, was not able to be here this evening. She will be here at future school committee presentations, and this report that I am discussing is based on the monitoring work that she did during this quarter. So again, the period that this report covers is April through mid-July. Monitoring activities this quarter included participation in district meetings, a school visit, and ongoing document and evidence review. During this quarter, district leaders continued to visit schools and provide feedback to principals related to their work as instructional leaders. At the middle high school, student performance data and other indicators were extremely concerning, and I'll come back to that in a few slides. The 2015-16 AIP, in other words, the one for the coming school year, was developed toward the end of the year with meaningful input from many people throughout the district. The department approved that plan on July 14, and shortly thereafter, there was another change in district leadership, which led to reconfiguration of the central office team. So I'll just briefly go over work and accomplishments and data related to each of the strategic objectives in the plan. So Objective One relates to curriculum and instruction. The actual title of that objective is to develop, refine, and implement curricula for all K to 12 core subjects and instructional practices aligned to the Common Core and WIDA standards. So during this reporting period, the district selected the coaches and the teachers who would undertake the revision of ELA and Science curriculum maps in grades K through eight. So our next monitoring report will describe the result of that work, and will also describe the status of ELA and Science curriculum in grades 9 through 12, as well as the district's math curriculum. During this period, district leaders continued visiting schools and providing feedback to principals. Principals have noted that these visits and feedback were very valuable and helpful in improving their practice. We have previously reported on the district's efforts to better serve English language learners. This quarter, ACCESS results became available. So as you probably know, ACCESS is the English Language Proficiency Assessment that's given to grades K through 12 students that have been identified as English language learners. There were increases in the mean student growth percentiles at all levels on that ACCESS test compared to the previous year. Next steps that we recommend for the district, first of all, to continue to address curriculum as needed for all subjects and grade levels. We also recommend that the district continue the practice of district leaders visiting schools and providing ongoing growth-producing feedback to principals. We have previously reported on the district's efforts to better serve students with disabilities, and so we recommended the district review MCAS results to determine the impact of this work. And the new Accelerated Improvement Plan for the coming year in Southbridge includes important steps to address the needs of English language learners and students with disabilities. So these are critical areas to address this year and to focus on. Strategic Objective Two is to expand and embed the use of data K through 12 to foster a cycle of continuous improvement aimed at assessing and improving instructional practices throughout the district. So Southbridge has a range of data, including data from the DIBELS assessment, achievement network assessments, high school quarterly assessments, as well as middle and high school attendance, suspension, and failure rates, and that data can all inform decisions and planning for the work going forward. The DIBELS assessment, which is the Dynamic Indicators of Basic Early Literacy Skills, that's an assessment that was administered in grades 1 through 5. There was progress demonstrated in kindergarten in terms of the percentage of students meeting their benchmark goals at the end of the year compared to the beginning of the year. In grades 1 through 5, there were mixed results, including several decreases. Achievement Net data, or ANET, I'm sorry, Achievement Network, or ANET data from the third and fourth test administrations became available this period. This is an assessment that's given to grades 2 through 8. The benchmark related to this data is that there would be an increase in the percentage of standards assessed where Southbridge outperforms the comparison group. Using this benchmark, the West Street School and the Charlton School improved between the third and fourth ANET administrations. The middle high school declined, and that's true for both ELA and math. And the district decided to change from these ANET assessments to the NWEA MAP assessments in the coming school year. And the reason for that, I believe there are several reasons, but those include district leaders saying that they anticipate that these assessments will provide a more meaningful measure of growth over time during the year. So we recommend that the district plan very carefully for this change, since it will require a shift in the approach on the part of staff and students at all levels. High school quarterly assessments were also analyzed this quarter. In math, the results for Algebra I, Algebra II, and Geometry did not meet the benchmark of 75% proficiency. ELA quarterly assessments at the high school were administered, but the results were not provided to the monitor. There was also, as I mentioned, data related to student engagement and support, and a great deal of this data is extremely alarming. At the high school, attendance decreased to 82.7%. Suspensions were lower in the fourth quarter this year compared to the fourth quarter last year. However, the total suspensions for the year, there were 299 suspensions in grades 9 through 12 this year. That was a 19% increase over last year. So taken together, this attendance and suspension data shows that students are missing a great deal of instruction. The number of dropouts at the high school increased over last year. There were 12 dropouts this quarter and 24 this year. The number of course failures was significant and deeply concerning. That number also increased over the same quarter last year. So all that specific data is in the report, which I believe you've read. One example that was of concern is that 190 courses were failed in grade 9 in the fourth quarter alone. And this is especially concerning because research shows that students that fail one or more courses in ninth grade are much less likely to graduate. There were 203 students in grades 9 through 12 who received an F in at least one course in the fourth quarter. At the middle school, indicators were mixed. On the positive side, there was a decrease in the number of suspensions for the year. However, that number is still very high. There were 305 suspensions at the high school, I'm sorry, at the middle school this year. There were large increases in course failures at the middle school level this quarter compared to the fourth quarter last year. 226 middle school students failed at least one course in quarter four alone, which represented a substantial increase over last year. So related to this data, we strongly recommend that the district formulate a plan, complete with specific strategies and benchmarks for addressing the issue of course failure rates. Educational improvement means not only increased rigor, but increased support and targeted instruction for students that need it. The new Accelerated Improvement Plan does include strategies to address students' social, emotional, and academic needs in a tiered, through a tiered system, but the change that needs to happen also relates to adult actions and expectations for students. Strategic Objective Three is to improve educator quality and the ability to implement rigorous and engaging instruction. Focus on results continued to play a key role in the development of administrator and teacher capacity to become effective leaders in implementing instructional practices. This embedded professional development for school leaders has provided highly effective support and important continuity for school leaders. The monitor over the course of the year has observed a great deal of that and found it to be very effective. Focus on results also this quarter provided effective professional development for instructional leadership team members at each school and for instructional resource specialists. So going forward, the 2015-16 AIP includes strategies for training, coaching, and supporting principals, IRSes, and teachers to make instruction rigorous and to ensure that students' needs are met. These strategies should be implemented with rigor and with fidelity. Strategic Objective Four is to increase parent and community involvement to enhance student learning. The main piece of work under this objective was the district conducting a parent survey at the end of the year to determine whether families feel more informed and supported by the school district. So results were not yet available at the time this report was written, and so we, of course, recommend that the district carefully analyze those survey results in order to identify strategies to deepen family involvement in teaching and learning in Southbridge. Part of every quarterly progress report is the assignment of ratings. We give two ratings for each strategic initiative. One is focused on process, and one is performance. So the process rating has to do with implementation, whether activities that are in the plan were implemented, and whether those are becoming embedded in the way the district operates. The performance ratings relate to the benchmarks in the plan and how much progress is made toward achieving those benchmarks. So all initiatives during this quarter were rated "technical implementation," or rated as being at that stage, which means that the activities in the plan were completed, but more time is needed for the initiative to be fully executed and embedded. Most AIP initiatives were related partially, were rated partially-reached performance goals, which means there is some evidence of an impact on outcomes, but we need to see more. The exception to that is Initiative 1.3, which was rated "performance goals not reached." That relates to implementing, delivering core curricula, implementing the Southbridge standard, and meeting the needs of English language learners and students with disabilities. So we can take questions now related to that report, and then we'll discuss the district review. Do you want to do that first?
Yeah, I think, let me just very quickly go over the district review, and then we'll be happy to take questions on the entire presentation, if that's okay. As I've previously mentioned in my visits to the Southbridge School Committee, we are going to be conducting a district accountability review in Southbridge. We will be formally notifying the superintendent of that review in the next week or so, if not by the end of this week, and that review, as I have mentioned at previous school committee meetings, will take place in October. And just to give everybody a little bit of background on the district review process for any new members on the school committee, the district review is conducted by the ESE, but it is actually done onsite by a team of independent reviewers. We actually do not have ESE staff on the review. They are typically staffed with six reviewers, and those six staff members, or six reviewers are aligned to these six standards you see in front of you. So the district is reviewed on these six standards: leadership and governance, curriculum and instruction, assessment, human resources and professional development, student support, and financial and asset management. The onsite review is four days in the district, typically four days in the district barring weather concerns or what have you, and what is, the result of the district review is a report that is released by my office. We typically like to have that report turned around to you within a month or two after the review, depending on the complexity of the review. A draft is shared with the superintendent before the public release. We then do a release on our website, and oftentimes are invited by the school committee to come and discuss the report. That is up to the discretion of the school committee. But we will be formally notifying the superintendent, as I mentioned, come in the next week or so, and then we will work with the superintendent on the preparation of that review. Typically, what we ask for is for the superintendent to designate a point person who works with our office. There's a document preparation stage that needs to take place. So we work with the superintendent to get ready for the review, and we are then onsite, like I said, for four days, and then turn around a written report to you as quickly as possible. So we look forward to that district review. We think it can be beneficial, both for the department to learn about the district, but also for the district to learn about itself and the practices that are happening within the school district. Oftentimes, in the case of when there's a new superintendent, it gives the superintendent some additional background on what's happening in the school district, even though, in this case, the interim superintendent will have been here for some time then. So that is the background on the review. I am happy to take any questions on any parts of the presentations. Laura and I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions by any committee members? Ms. Quinney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Curran, first, I'd like to thank you for the email follow-up that you sent us regarding questions we had asked last time. That was greatly appreciated. So I think, in summary for the public, the highlights to our quarter four progress report are our access scores, which all increased, as well as... are our access scores, which all increased, as well as the West Street School and Charlton Street School Anet goal, three out of four and four out of four, surpassing the network. Lots of concerns regarding the, looking at the data that you presented to us, I'm under strategic objective number two, embedding the use of data K-12 to foster a cycle of continuous improvement aimed at assessing and improving instructional practices throughout the district. The inconsistencies regarding the DIBELS scores, some went up, some went down. Is that because the expectation increases as DIBELS go on, the amount of words and fluency per quarter increases? And then, so we had kind of been progressing, and then as that bar got set higher, some grades just weren't making that mark? Is that?
The expectations do change over the course of the year. I would leave that to the district to explain exactly why.
All right, I just, that's what I thought. I just wanted to clarify. Thank you. And then for Southbridge Middle High School, the Anet scores through six through eight went down and didn't meet that threshold for. I have a couple of thoughts regarding this, not the least of which, in looking at the AIP for next year, a lot of the onus falls on instructional resource specialists in coaching and providing that support to teachers and coaching them through these instructional practices. I looked up at, combined at the elementary schools, we have eight-hundred-and-sixty-five students. This is for last year, I believe. And we have four IRSs, one for math and one for ELA at both of the buildings. And then at the middle high school, we have one-thousand-eighty-six students and one instructional resource specialist. So looking at the progress that's being made at the elementary schools, one might be able to make the leap that that support is proving advantageous to student outcomes and instructional So my question, I guess, to the district would be, are we looking at how to implement what appears to be working at the elementary school in the middle high school?
Sure. So it is, you're a hundred percent accurate, obviously, that there's the one IRS position of the middle high school. We do also have the middle high school and academic dean in place who ascended to that position and therefore has a depth of background in academic coaching. One of the challenges, and it's a valid point, and it begs the question of the staffing level with respect to coaching supports that are in place, is the fact that we have to make a better effort in making sure that the people that are in those positions, the academic dean and the IRS at the middle high school, in fact, have enough time to be able to get into classrooms. That, just in the two weeks that I've been here, I've been able to glean, and I think it's a credit to the candor of the administrative cabinet to say that we have to come up with some different strategies to make sure those individuals who have the requisite tool belt to provide the coaching actually have the time to be able to get into the classroom. So sometimes their time has been spent on other tasks, and that was definitely discussed last week in the administrative retreat, that we mustn't fall victim to that and to be able to. But you're right, it may be a sheer supply and demand issue as well, where the, you know, the number of students, the number of classrooms at the middle high school, even with the academic dean position in place. But we're confident that we have some solid coaching in place if we can free the people up to be able to get into the classrooms to do what they need to do. And I think that happens in the interest of full candor. I think that happens more readily at the elementary schools from what I've been able to glean, and I certainly would ask Ms. Stanton and Mrs. Earls to reflect on that. If that's, is that an accurate statement?
I think that what happened last year is that the academic-
Ms. Chair, continue. Please. Thank you.
The academic dean and the IRS or instructional resource specialists at the middle high school took care of a lot of the test administration duties and the data collection as a result of the various assessments, and that includes MCAS, but it included Anet and STAR reading and the various other assessments, the quarterly assessments, so the organic assessments as well as the standardized assessments. So the IRS and the academic dean did take on the share of administration of those assessments. We need to transition those back towards the guidance department and put more onus on the department heads in terms of the quarterlies, collecting that data and helping to analyze that data as well.
Thank you.
Just to piggyback on that, so in reading next year's AIP, where it says IRS, would that be IRS and academic dean?
It would be, for all intents and purposes, the academic dean is absolutely providing, right, supports.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, I know we had talked about last time at great length, the amount of students with the quarterly assessments at the middle high school and how they weren't meeting that seventy-five percent standard, but I would like to share that we had second quarter math assessments, and the proficiency rate for Algebra I was nineteen point eight, and that in this report has gone up to fifty-three percent. In geometry, it was fifty-eight point five percent in quarter two, and in this report it goes up to sixty-six percent. And Algebra II was twenty-five point seven percent, and that has gone up to sixty-eight percent. So some growth there, but still not meeting that seventy-five percent goal. And also, I'm unclear as to why we don't have data for ELA for the quarter four assessments. Do we know?
Mrs. Earls?
We had turnover, significant turnover in the English department. The tests were administered, and the scores are reflected in the students' fourth quarter grades, but it was simply a matter of those teachers in what I would call an unprofessional way of not turning in those scores individually before they exited the building.
Thank you. And we had talked about when those numbers I had discussed last time, and it was stated that a core root analysis would be done to figure out why those failure rates were so high. And in looking at the AIP, it seems that what has been addressed in a root analysis was done regarding the lack of rigor as opposed to why students are failing. So I guess my question for everybody would be, if we are lacking rigor, why are so many students failing? They don't seem to correlate to me. I don't, and we talked about, as rigor increased, we needed to provide more support for students in order to meet the rigorous demands we're placing on them. If, based on what I read for next year's AIP, a concern is that we lack rigor, so that's not present. So if we don't have those rigorous demands, how are we at such high failure rates? Two hundred and three students in nine through twelve.
One of the goals of the AIP in the revision for this year, for the incoming school year, is to actually define rigor. Rigor is not merely the increase in expectation, but it's also increasing the support for students. So when we say classrooms are lacking rigor, it means that they are, in addition, lacking the support so that all students can be successful. And I think that is where we will get to our goal three, which is a real change in culture and climate, in which the expectation is that all students can learn at very high levels. It's just that when we have discrepancies in basic skills, we have to work very hard to make sure that all students are receiving supports, whether they're special education students, ELL students, or just students with low basic skills.
So I guess to that I would add, my question would be, what was the root cause of our high failure rates in quarter three and our increasing failure rates in quarter four?
I think I could recapture what Ms. Stanton said. I think that there's a lack of understanding as to what rigor is. So in some teachers' mind, the perception is that rigor is to hold a certain bar and hold it high and to not maintain any kind of flexibility in terms of either accommodating students' growth or adjusting the ways in which students can demonstrate proficiency or demonstrate mastery. So piggybacking on what Ms. Stanton said and on the admin retreat from last week, one of the first activities that we have planned for the first days of school, our first day, is a discussion of rigor. So we want to take what we did with the admin retreat and our personal building agenda, we want to have that discussion. We want to talk about what rigor is, how we maintain rigor, how we establish rigor, and that rigor isn't simply set in a bar high, leaving it there, and not helping our students achieve it. I think there was this lack of perception, there was a perception among a lot of the faculty that we hold the bar high, if the kids don't meet the bar, they're going to fail, and that's, that was it. And there was no movement in helping to, you know, how do we address that gap between what the students were doing and where that bar was? So I think it's exactly what Ms. Stanton said. That is what essentially came out of our analysis, is that the teacher's perception is, this is rigor, and so we've got to maintain rigor, and that's the way we're going to get better without offering the supports.
Thank you.
On that point, I'm sorry, Ms. Quinney, if I may, just, you know, one of the things we talked about at length at the retreat last week was really doing a close analysis on teacher lesson planning and making sure that the lesson planning going forward, that we are providing constructive and effective feedback to teachers on lesson planning, that we're actually, you know, the teachers are lesson planning, let's be frank, right? And that those lesson plans are being reviewed, and that the certain tenants that we would expect to see are included, and that moreover, we're correlating those lesson plans from instructor to instructor. So there aren't these wide discrepancies between what instruction looks like and how what students know and are able to do is demonstrated from classroom to classroom, from content area to content area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we're going to have a nutty about curriculum again. We have mapped curriculum. I mean, we have, I think, mapped curriculum every summer since I've probably been alive. We don't have curriculum. Curriculum has multiple parts. We've discussed this at length at the last time you were all here, the components of curriculum, and we're still mapping curriculum. And I think that it would be an astronomical challenge to deliver a curriculum that doesn't exist. We continue to have these mapping conversations and having people set the maps, but we don't have common assessments, we don't have lesson plans, we don't have units. I went through the curriculum map online, and it says units one through seven, and it lists all these things. I would think, as a teacher, that I would like unit one. What are we all going to learn in unit one in ELA? Unit two, what are we all, as opposed to these maps that are set from Massachusetts to Seattle, and it doesn't tell you how to get from state to state to state to state? How long can we anticipate mapping curriculum before we have curriculum to deliver to our students in an effective way?
It's a, this is a great question. So I'd say a couple of things. First of all, when I mentioned that we'll be reporting on additional curriculum going forward, you know, that was actually not implying that there isn't curriculum for those areas. There might not be, but that's not, you know, that wasn't our finding. Another thing I would say is that it is a department expectation of all districts that curriculum be continually updated and continually revised. So again, when we recommend paying attention to curriculum going forward, that's just part of what we would recommend to any district. Beyond that, I don't know if anyone from the district wants to speak to the depth of the curriculum that does exist, what gaps have been impacting teachers' practice.
Not sure I want to answer that, but I will. The curriculum is an issue, it continues to be an issue, but we are working hard to get back to a cycle of curriculum review. We understand, I understand when I came in in July last year that the cycle of review had been inconsistent, and so we reestablished that. I would like to say very publicly thank you to the English Language Arts Department, particularly at the elementary school. They have been working all summer to produce exactly what you're talking about, which is a curriculum document that you can hand to a new teacher who comes into Southbridge and says exactly what you're saying. This is what we do. That's not posted yet, but we do anticipate it to be posted. It will include exactly what you're talking about, units of instruction, common assessments, and pacing guides. We are getting a little tripped up in the Science Department because of the new standards for new generation science standards, but we are ongoing with that conversation, and we will be working on that for the remainder of this year. I like to see the curriculum cycle as a two-year process, so that it's written, it's implemented, it's given feedback from staff who are working with the curriculum, and year two is the revision and the final document. I would also like, under Mr. Bliss, to be able to present those to school committee, which I think is the appropriate process to use, and I understand that that has not happened, which I think adds to your frustration as a committee as to where are we in this process.
There's a lot of frustration regarding curriculum.
Mr. Joe Bandy, want to comment on that before I let Mr. Yama on?
I just did the curriculum. It's very disturbing to sit here and hear what has transpired in just a two-year period because I sat on this board previously where we set forth a five-year curriculum revision plan under Dr. Hanley that had that revision plan laid out on five years. So I want to talk about going forward, but this district had a solid five-year curriculum revision. We started with ELA, with, we were putting a hundred thousand dollars per year just into curriculum revision for textbooks, our science program. We put, we invested two-hundred thousand dollars probably four years ago. So to say that there was no curriculum revision, that's incorrect. This district had a strong curriculum revision plan. What happened in two years? I don't know, but we were on the road to having that plan. So I share the frustration of my colleague, Ms. Quinney, because I feel like I'm in a time warp. Not to steal what my colleague, Mr. Louser, used to say, my first tour of duty, we were talking about rigor seven years ago. What is rigor? Let's raise the bar, you know? And I'll defer back to Ms. Quinney because I have a couple of other qualmets that go to some other things in this plan, but I share your frustration when it comes to curriculum. But we were on the road for curriculum revision. We had strong revision plans, and I hope to get back to that. So thank you.
Ms. Quinney?
Thank you. We're transitioning from Anet to MAP. MAP is a computer-based assessment tool, is that correct?
I don't know, to be honest with you. I don't know the answer to that.
I believe that it is, which I know that was put in as a capital item in order to make sure that we had the infrastructure to support such a computer-based assessment tool, which was denied by the town, which I think is going to provide us with some challenges in planning carefully for the change from Anet to MAP. And I wanted to talk about attendance and suspension at the middle high school. That was another thing that we were, at the last time you all presented, we're going to look into the root cause of. I didn't see anything in the AIP for next year addressing those particular issues or discussing the root causes of the increase or the decrease in attendance, the increase in suspensions, and the increase in tardies and all of that. How are we, as a district, addressing those issues moving forward?
Mr. Bliss?
Right, correct.
Yep. So under the action steps that were alluded to in the presentation, we did begin this discussion. One of the first conversations that Mr. Bliss, Mr. Kukase, and I had was around the suspension numbers. Looking at the suspension numbers and doing a deeper analysis, there were several students who received lengthy suspensions, and so that is, that contributes to that high number for sure at the high school level. But to remedy that going forward, because we can't go back, so to remedy that going forward, we have created a Saturday school, which will give us an additional option and not remove these students from class during the week, not remove them from the building during the week, but allow us to give them a Saturday suspension, which Mr. Bliss and I will take control of, so it's a budget-neutral item. Mr. Bliss and I are going to monitor the Saturday suspension school up at Colav, and it will give us an additional recourse, an additional consequence. It will come with it the necessary component of meeting with the parents and the assistant principal, the principal if necessary, to make sure that the students do, in fact, attend, and there will be further consequences if the student does miss consecutive Saturday schools. So trying to consequence the students, control the behavior, but at the same time not remove the students from class. We are trying to address attendance as well. Part of that root cause analysis, we discovered that the attendance numbers are sometimes not accurate. The students may be tardy, they may not report to homeroom, they may wander the building at- to homeroom, they may wander the building at 7:30 rather than going to homeroom. So put in a stopgap later in the day to make sure that our I-Pass numbers, which is our student management system, is indeed accurate. That's something that Mr. Kukase and I discussed today with the administrative staff, and the administrative support personnel, the administrative assistants, and also some rules for homeroom, and for addressing tardies, and to make sure that those students are reported accurately in the system. And attendance, truancy, also addressed through the, the Saturday school as well. So increasing the consequence, increasing the critical nature of that consequence, hoping that it resonates more with the students.
If I, if I may, through the chair, so Mrs. Earl's elucidates on, on some of the, the steps we will take in a, in a sort of, in a reactionary mode, which of course you have to be positioned to do in any, in a school setting. However, the flip side, the flip side to that is also true, where we are looking to open school with a consistent messaging across all of our schools, around the importance of being on time, ready to learn, having increased frequency of communication and outreach to parents on that front, which is something we did, you know, several years ago at Wells, and it's something we, that with the, the entire cabinet talked about, opening school this year in all of our schools with a message that comes from the leadership in the building, and the leadership at Central Office, to, to home. So that we, we, we set the bar higher, in terms of what our expectations are, not only for student deportment, but for, for student attendance, and being ready and prepared to, to learn in school. And, and, you know, it's, it's also, we're also putting in some training, so that it is not so reactionary when presented with situations, particularly in the secondary and, and the high school level in particular, so that we adopt a more, a less reactive, more proactive stance with respect to, because it's, it's pretty quick to go from zero to ten and get to, get to the point of a suspension. It doesn't take much to, to do that. And it's harder work, is to figure out how not to do that. And that we recognize as our, as our full charge this year as well. So, not just the reaction, which we have to be positioned for, but also that proactive stance, where we want to make sure we're meeting the social, emotional needs of our students.
If I may, I would just add that, with all of the data that's encompassed in the, in the quarterly report, in presenting these data to the, to the commissioner, and letting him, giving him a preview of the report, and letting him see it, these numbers stood out to him as deeply, deeply concerning. And just purely for the loss of instruction time, when you're talking about that attendance rate plus the suspensions, the, the vast amount of instruction time that is lost by the students is deeply concerning. And so we are gonna be paying particularly attention to this in the upcoming reports through the AIP, and through the district review, to try to get through, try to get to some of the causes that might have, might be having an impact on these numbers.
Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, I'd like to ask a follow-up to that question.
I certainly agree with the fact that students should remain in school, and I understand that this is a topic that's throughout the state, with some of the schools that are in similar positions as, as us, as to student suspension. What I don't want to see, though, and I don't think any school district wants to see, is to the detriment of the students that are there that actually want to learn. So, not only are you gonna, i- if, if the goal is to keep the bad behavior in the classroom, just to keep student suspensions down.
Right.
To, to reduce the amount of time that they're not in class.
Right.
What happens to instructional time for the remaining students that want to be there? That's the balance, I know that, that's a rhetorical question, maybe?
Yeah, absolutely.
But that, that is an issue to me. There's kids in this system that want to learn, that have driven out of the system, because we keep too many kids in that are misbehaving. So there has to be a good balance, and we, and I, I have no doubt with Mr. Bliss's leadership and administrative team, that we'll come up with a plan. But from my perspective to, to DESE and the commissioner is, I'm not gonna sacrifice the students that want to be in the classroom.
Absolutely. And, and that's perfectly understandable, that, that balance is important. I mean, the, as, as many of you know, Chapter 222, the new discipline law, was implemented and enacted in July, last July, for, for this year. And, and it really focuses on alternatives to suspensions, and, and trying to interact with the student before the need for a suspension, so that we can minimize the loss of instruction time. But I absolutely take your point, and I would just add that it's certainly the suspensions, but the attendance rate is particularly alarming also. If we talk about an eighty-two percent attendance rate, for example, you're looking at upwards of thirty days per school missed, per student, on average. So, but point taken, absolutely, that the, the balance is important.
Can I just clarify? So, we are saying that the causes of our high suspension rates were extended suspensions, and the reason, the cause for our attendance rate being so low were lack of consequences for not attending. Is that?
No, I, I wouldn't say that those are the only causes. I was just pointing out a few of the causes, that we had come up with looking at numbers. But no, I'm not, I'm not prepared to say those, the exclusive causes, no.
All right. Because I asked, what, the root cause analysis showed, what, what were the reasons that our suspension rates were so high, and our attendance rates were high? And I thought that's what was it.
No, that was some of the causes. There's certainly other causes, you know, and this is something we have to talk about with the teachers, we have to talk about with the behaviorists, the assistant principals who are there. Those are just two of the factual numbers in terms of looking at the numbers.
And, oh, and inaccurate reporting, I'm sorry, regarding attendance. All right, thank you for that. The improving achievement of students and addressing, I think we're talking about how we're gonna be addressing those things moving forward. What additional supports? I know in the next AIP, it talks about that tiered interventions. How are we providing those tiered interventions? When we're looking at kind of that IRS coaching model and resources that we're potentially lacking, how are we then gonna, in addition to that, provide this tiered intervention for these students who are struggling and need more assistance?
One of the things in the, in the short time that I've been here, you know, I, I always have sort of a keen eye, and it's probably, it's probably because of the district that I just came from, where we had a, a market decline in our enrollment, so we were acutely concerned about our staffing model. And, you know, in, in looking at this, Ms. Quinney, I, you know, I, in looking at our staffing configuration for the number of students we have in the school system, I think we need to take a hard look at, at how we're deploying limited scarce, so to say, scarce economic resources in the way of human resources. So it's, I don't think we have a numbers problem. We may well have a training issue, we may have an issue with how we're deploying people, we may have an issue with whether the people that we put in position, particularly our educational assistants, have the, the tool belt that we really would require of them to, to be able to really provide a level of intervention and support in the classroom. Again, this is largely conjecture, quite honestly on my part, but I'm looking at the numbers, and, and the number of paraprofessionals we have, and the number of staff we have, and we have a number of students who regrettably have choiced out, and, and I just don't see an issue with numbers. I, I see potentially an issue where, and we had it my last district as well, where we said, it's not a numbers issue, it's whether the people that are in the positions have the tool belt to actually provide the supports that they need in the classroom. I mean, are the paraprofessionals, in some instances, you'd rather bring in someone who has a, a much more acute skillset, and be able to meet students' needs, and not have two people with, with lesser skills, or with fewer skills. So, we have to take a hard look at that, because I don't think in fairness to the taxpayers in Southbridge, I, I don't think it's really an issue where we're underbudgeted, with respect to staffing, the staffing model. I need to obviously do more homework around that, but it's, I would say, there's a, there could be a training issue at play.
Thank you. A question, just an aside. When will the MCAS scores be unembargoed?
So, that is to be determined. Unembargoed to the public, I assume, you mean, yeah? So, I would, we are aiming at the moment for a, as, as, as we typically do, a mid-September public release of the state and the school and district results. As I mentioned, this year's a little different, because we will be releasing half the state for grades three through eight, and all of grade ten on MCAS, and then another, have another release of the public for the grades three through eight that took part. So, but I think for the MCAS release, we'll be looking at the same timeframe as usual, about mid-September.
Thank you. And in the next steps, it says, like, examining the reasons for the high failure rate at the middle high school, and formulating a plan. Are we at the, starting to formulate the plan, or are we still investigating the reasons behind it? Because I know school starts in a few weeks. Do we have a plan with specific strategies to address this issue?
Underlying the suspension numbers, or the?
The high failure rate at the middle and high school.
Well, part of that, I think, Ms. Stanton, do you want to take that, because part of it, part of some of that work was done today, as far as?
The revision of the AIP started about April, March, April. So, the work in revising the plan finished in June. At that point, staff were, teachers who were involved were on summer break. So as they come back, and the ILTs are reestablished, they will begin to analyze very quickly what the root causes are, and then develop the specific plans. And I would anticipate that you would see those in the school improvement plans, because the school improvement plans will be directly aligned to the AIP.
And also, to that point, also, Ms. Quinney, you know, just anecdotally, from, from some of the families and some of the students that I work with from Southbridge, one of the things that's, that has constantly, it's a recurring theme, and it's our job to dismantle this misnomer, that students will get to a point when a particular course and say, well, you know what, I'm gonna fail it anyway, I'll be, you know, I'll just take it during summer school. I'll just, you know, there's this, it, it is a common, it is a recurring theme, I'm sorry to say. And it's incumbent on us as the cabinet, with the support of the school committee, and support of our parents and our teaching faculty, to say, that's not okay. And, you know, it's not okay to fail four core subjects, to make up two of them in, in what we look at as summer school, and then be promoted. That's, that, we're actually setting kids up to fail, if that's our posture. And, and we need to take a serious look as school committee around that, and as the, as the leadership team, to say, that's not okay. Because then we shake our heads and wonder why, years later, the, the behaviors have manifested, and kids are experiencing frustration because they're not able to meet standard, and, and it's, it's a cycle that it's incumbent on us to break.
Thank you both for your patience. I know I take up a lot of time, but I think this is the most important thing we have going on in our district, and is worth discussing at great length in order to move the district forward, and to improve the education of our students in classrooms. So thank you both.
Absolutely.
Dr. Page?
Mr. Chair, so I know I'm probably gonna sound a little bit like a broken record, probably to you and to probably some of our, our folks here. Is there a plan, or does anybody care about looking at the distribution of student performance that leads to these overlying statistics? Because it seems like, it's very easy to look at overall numbers, and say, okay, overall, in aggregate, you went down here.
Right.
Or you went, and so many students failed one, one or more courses, or whatever.
Right.
But in the details, is there a pattern that can be developed? Can we, can we dissect out some kind of differential that lets us point to specific deficiencies in the district, or in certain type? It might be because our math and science students aren't doing well, because they can't read very well.
Correct.
You know what I'm saying? And, and so to, to keep hammering the, say, the high school, or the dropout rate, we look at these numbers from the elementary schools, they're not reading proficiently when they come into middle school. So how in the world can we expect them to tackle that more advanced curriculum? And as it goes up and up and up, so we're promoting, it seems to me, if I look at this, even though we're making some incremental progress early.
Right.
Still, the rubber's gonna hit the road later on. And so, I guess, I mean, I don't really mean to rant, but it just seems like we're, we're looking at this aggregate stuff, and we're not really getting into any kind of details as to root cause analysis. I hear the term a lot, but I haven't heard anybody put up a table that says, root cause analysis, one, two, three, four, five.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, I would, I, I appreciate the comment very much. And, you know, as I said, my other hat that I wear at the department is, is in charge of the data services side, so I'm very much in tune with what you're saying. We do significant disaggregation of the data, and although in the report, we're really focusing on sort of a public presentation and, and getting at the aggregate level. Part of what we encourage the district to do, and I know they do do through the, in the AIP, is to look at some deeper grain of the data. And we have mentioned specifically around some data analyses around ELL students, and students with disabilities, that we would like to see, see done, to try to get a better feel of what, what, what some of that causes. The other piece is, when we do a district review, we will provide the review team with reams and reams of data about disaggregated to the, just above the student level for privacy concerns, but just about as low as we can go with, and still have it be not personally identifiable, so that they can do a real look at, at some of the, a deeper dive into the data. And one of the things we do, I have a staff member that prepares the data, the review team with a deep data dive, for a couple hours before they come out here, so that they can really look at the data and be informed about it before they get out here and ask questions that they would expect the district to be able to answer, about some of the specific questions, and specific subgroups, performance, and as you mentioned, some of that finer detail.
Okay, thank you. I just want to, I just want to, again, put that out there, because, you know, it's been a year now, and, or almost a year, and I still haven't seen any kind of disaggregated data from anywhere.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I can tell you that when we at the department look at the data, and are looking at some of the, we are looking much below just the aggregate level, specifically subgroups. We're particularly concerned with our subgroup that we call the high need students, which are your English language learners, your economically disadvantaged students, and your students with disabilities. We pay particular attention to that subgroup, which is prevalent here in Southbridge. So, I can tell you that that analysis is happening, although it didn't, we, we don't get down that level in the, in the, in the report, beyond recommending additional analyses for specific subgroups. That, that work is happening back at the department.
Thank you.
If I may, at that point, Mr. Chair, so I want to qualify something I said a few minutes ago, a little bit, because, you know, if, if we are, if we look creatively and critically at our budget, and we think about the fact that we're floating at about seventeen percent ELL population, it's a high needs population, it's an underperforming population, it's a chronically underperforming population, and we look at the staffing that we've deployed, particularly at the middle high school, to meet the, the number in that building, that is, it's inadequate staffing model. There's no doubt about it. I mean, we have an ELL teacher on each side of the house, as it were, kind of end of story. And, and you have, we have, you know, seventy-ish students, you know, on either side, who, for whom, one licensed educator's really responsible for the lion's share of at least the English language acquisition component of, of one's learning. And that, that model was, is something we need, we need. It's, it's just inadequate. That's not to suggest it's new spending to meet the need, but we must look at how we're meeting those kids' needs. We shouldn't, we shouldn't be surprised when you have one teacher of record for seventy kids, who are at a beginning level of English fundamentally, as to why they're not meeting progress. It's really not, it's really not rocket science, you know? So, it's dependent on us to look at that critically.
Mr. Joe Band? Yeah, just quickly. First off, when it came to the comparison group of Lawrence and Springfield, was that a district decision to compare them to those two other districts? Or was that the department of?
That was a district decision. I believe those were the only districts that were available for comparison in the ANET network.
Thank you. And as far as going forward, and I, I look forward, as a school committee member, working with DESE, in the next year's AIP that you've spoken glowingly about early in this letter, it was a strong plan. And I think we have the right people in place right now to implement that plan. What is your specific role, Mr. Curtin, when it comes to being in the district? Do you simply come, I've been to a few of these AIPs.
Sure.
Do you simply come and, here's your report, or are you regularly in the district, and you as well, Ms. Rashan?
Right. So, we have a, we, we are monitoring several districts. I, we, we have a monitor dedicated to Southbridge, who his primary responsibility is to be here in the district. If necessary, our staff was out here actually last, last week, or two weeks ago, to meet with Superintendent Bliss. So, we are, I am not regularly scheduled to be in the district, doesn't mean I can't be regularly scheduled to be in the district. The monitor that is out here is ultimately my responsibility. So, I depend on her to provide the monitoring feedback, but it doesn't mean that I can't be in the district.
Okay. Thank you. The, the other is, if I may, that we, we used to engage DSAC, was, used to be engaged to work with us, and the, the team that came out, we had such an incredible group that came out and met with us from DESE last week, and then our, our two folks, both Mr. Jackman and Ms. Diaz, were with us last week on, all day on Thursday, and part of Friday on, at our retreat. But Joe, Joe Con, Dr. Joe Connors, came out, met with me last week, and said, Steve, however we can help, in whatever way, so please just be mindful of that as you you move through the retreat." So, as we moved through the retreat, the administrative cabinet, we said, "What are some areas?" Not to layer things on, because the last thing we need are more actions and more initiatives, but how are some of these actions and initiatives? How do we feel we need some reinforcement and some fortitude around that? And we have three distinct areas that we identified as a cabinet, and now I'll follow up with Dr. Connors tomorrow to say, "That's another layer," and that's all free, that's a service provided, there's no budget implication. And Joe will be honest, and Dr. Connors will be honest in saying, you know, "I have some folks that can help." And one of the areas was with coaching for principals. I mean, we have very talented, very dedicated people in place, but some, some individuals that could probably use some, some support and some coaching, so that would be fantastic. So, we look to reengage as where our relationship with DSAC, provided it's not to layer things on, but to provide support for things that are already there.
Just as a follow-up, Mr. Bliss, I agree with you, and especially, I'm very happy to see Ms. Catterett, Ms. Skripak, and Ms. Mantenio here as principals of our elementary school, because they are longtime educators in this town. They understand our, our, our population, they've been part of the curriculum revisions in the past, and moving forward, I, I think they have that institutional knowledge of what needs to be done. And I think with support with Mrs. Earls, we will get there, so.
Great.
Any other questions? No questions or comments? I'd like to thank you very much for your presentation tonight.
Thank you very much for the time. Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number seven, reports. A school committee budget finance subcommittee, Dr. Page?
Yes, very briefly, there was a budget and finance subcommittee meeting held on Friday, July 31st, from 2:00 to about, now, to about 4:00 o'clock. The, it was, no actions were taken at the meeting. The primary discussions were rounding off the fiscal year 2015 budget, and also review and preparation of the fiscal year 2016 budget. We talked about some of the items that'll come up on the agenda later on, budgetary impact of some changes in the athletic staffing. There is going to be a, another subcommittee meeting scheduled, tentatively, I believe it's for next Thursday at 6:00 o'clock. Two major agenda items that will be on that meeting are discussion of the solar program within the town, with the town there, and the discussion around the most sensible deployment of the town's appropriation of approximately $200,000 for instructional resource materials. And we'll, hopefully there, we'll be making recommendations to the school committee about those specific items. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Next agenda item, negotiations, Mr. Bishop?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have not had our first meeting yet. That is scheduled for August 25th at 5:30 to 6:30, I believe, in room? 100, the Colav Building. I know we have two units in, of employees who haven't met with the negotiations in quite some time, and those will be our first two units to try to come to a workable contract with. Thank you.
Moving on to policy, Mr. Jovan?
I have no report. Our next meeting is scheduled, or our first meeting of this year is scheduled for August 19th at 6:00 p.m.
Thank you. Moving on to the student representative to the school committee, we do not have one on yet. Moving on to finance director, your report, unless the superintendent would like to comment?
Just a couple of points. First of all, thank you to, to Mr. Latoy for stepping in prior to a formal, formal appointment to help us out in the business office. Mr. Latoy has been working with the business office staff to truly, and I say it with a very, with a very clinical lens, to, to truly dissect the fiscal '16 salary schedules that were in place, to really make sure that we're plugging in all the, with all of the new hires and the staff changes, to simply make sure that we're landing where we need to land, to stay within the parameters of our fiscal '16 budget. Moreover, and another piece of that is working with the building leadership to make sure from each of the schools that those individuals who are in instructional leadership positions, athletic positions, extracurricular positions, that essentially our salary model is as sound as we can, and we're really looking to build this from the ground up, so that our numbers are crisp and on point for fiscal '16, and provide us with sufficient backup as we begin to build fiscal '17's budget. Thank you.
Moving on to D, Superintendent?
Thank you very much, Mr. Lazzo. Just a very quick update, we still have a few staff positions we're looking to fill. It, it's, it's been, it's been quite a hustle. We were, we're, we're down to just a few positions, and again, our posture now is that every person who's hired for an instructional position comes in as a final stage and interviews in with me in the central office, so that has been incredibly enjoyable, to see the enthusiasm and the talent that has been brought forward from our, from our elementary schools and as well as from the middle, middle high school. Thank you to Mrs. Earls for continuing to, to do a lot of the hiring for both sides of the house, as it were, for the middle high school, as we look to move forward in hiring an associate principal for that building, but are not there quite yet, obvious, for obvious reasons. And also, just a plug, this Friday afternoon, there's a Fourth Annual Youth Leadership Summit titled Music Around the World, and it'll be held on the Town Common from noon to 6:00 p.m., and I promised the organizers that we would put a plug in for that event. Just one other quick item, we are posting, prior to coming here, we sent a message to our webmaster to please post that bus routes will be published the first part of next week. We did our IPASS conversion about 48 hours ago, so all the student information was moved over to the 2015-16 school year, and that information is now in the hands of AA Transportation, and they're building the bus routes. In fact, most of them are done, we just want to take one more peek at them before they go off. So, first part of next week, those will be published to the website. In addition, just a, something for the committee to be aware of, that our NIAC accreditation for our early childhood program through Eastford Road School, we're going through an extensive accreditation process this year, and our principal at Eastford Road School, Mary Skripak, has done just a phenomenal job. This is layered on to everything else we have going on, and I received some correspondence today that the annual report that Ms. Skripak authored has been accepted. That's sort of the kickoff point of this accreditation process, and it is a vital accreditation process with respect to our early childhood program. So, a credit to, to Principal Skripak and to your staff for shepherding that cause amidst everything else going on. So, job well done. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? If I could ask the superintendent?
Jovan, through you, Superintendent? Is it possible going forward, I know in the past, years ago, we used to get, as part of the superintendent's report, was a listing of new appointments for teaching positions or any new appointments to the district, as well as any people that have left the district? That way, it kind of gives the, the school committee an idea of who's coming, who's going, and who's still here? If that's possible?
It is, it is possible and in the works.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Any questions or further discussion? None?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, to Mr. Bliss. I didn't know if you wanted to just comment on the open houses, because I know it's a different, it's before school this year.
Sure. And I'd love to ask each of our building principals to speak to the open house format that's in place at each school. It's very exciting. Does anyone want to speak?
For, for the middle high school.
Thank you.
So, our open house is on Monday, August 24th, which is our teacher's first day back, which should be interesting, because our teachers will have minimal time in the building before we entertain. Our format is to have the schedules, which are still in, I'll say they're more than a draft state, but they're still not set at that point, because students will come in and they'll, they will be troubleshooting to do the first week of school, so I would ask that parents be cognizant of that, and you may meet a teacher that day that may in fact not be your child's teacher of record for that content area for the rest of the year. But we're going to do our best, knowing that these, the open house is so early. So, our format is at 4:00 and at 5:00. In the auditorium, we will repeat an introductory program, whichever time period you can be there for is fine, and it'll be just a basic overview, any changes that are highlighted in the handbook, and anything that we want to highlight as an administrative staff. So, we'll share that with parents and families. Again, that will be at 4:00, and the same program repeated at 5:00 o'clock, so there's no need to attend both. And then it is a true open house format, as opposed to follow your child's schedule format, which we would have done later in the year. This will be a true open house, so you can go and visit the teachers that your child is set up with, or the departments, and, and get to know the departments as a whole. On the middle side, it'll be visiting the teams as a whole and getting to know all of the team members that your child will have as teachers. The middle schedule, the middle school schedule will be set, because the, the children should be placed on teams, barring any last minute shifts.
Ms. Mantenio?
So, at Charlton Street, it's going to be on Tuesday, August 25th. It's going to be from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. It will be a meet and greet where the parents have been notified their, what teachers, their students, their children will be having. So, the list will be reposted in the foyers, and teachers will give a presentation or information of their expectations for the school year. And a 1:00, we'll be going home notifying parents of a reminder for the open house.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I say ditto?
Ditto.
I know one of the expectations of the school committee and desire from parents in town is to create alignment from West Street to Charlton Street. So, Mrs. Mantenio and I planned our open houses together. So, in addition, we will be having our open house the 25th, the same hours, 4:00 to 6:00. It will be a meet and greet format where teachers will have time on the 24th or the 25th to prepare their classes and get things set up, and I think, as you know, in the past, open house has been later in the year, so I'm really excited about this opportunity for teachers to set expectations, homework routines, right from the get-go with parents, and also have, students have the opportunity to come in, meet and greet their teachers, and, and see what resources are in the classroom, and have teachers have an opportunity to explain those expectations as well. In addition, we will be conducting the same all-call to remind staff in English and Spanish about the open house, because it is so early, and we will also post class lists as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And at Eastford Road, we will be having two open houses? So, August 27th during the day, and 28th during the day are, we will be having kindergarten orientation. So, on the 27th, parents will be welcomed back from 4:00 to 6:00. So, even though parents have come during the day, half of our students will have already seen the school, but children who are coming to orientation on the 28th will have not had that opportunity yet. Teachers will be meeting and giving a lot of information, as well as myself, on the orientation. But the open house would be more relaxed, it would be more of a meet and greet to see all staff, not just their child's classroom, and because it's really their introduction to the school system, a lot of the housekeeping things are done at the orientation. So, again, it would just be more relaxed to meet and greet. Teachers will have an opportunity present at the open house. That's 4:00 to 6:00 on August 27th for kindergarten students, and for preschool students, it's also 4:00 to 6:00, and that will be on September the 3rd.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All set? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to clarify, will parents still be getting letters home stating who their teacher is, and then will that have when the open house will be, or is that not happening this year for the elementary schools?
So, at Charlton Street, we, my assistant and Kate Potter have phoned all first grade parents to let them know who their child's teacher will be, and we sent letters home at the end of school with the report cards telling the students what their, who their teacher would be. The plan was to unify with West Street to send letters home, so that we were waiting for IPASS to be rolled over, and that discussion is yet to be finalized, when they will be going home. But our intent was to send letters home again, to make sure that everyone was sure.
So, will West Street be sending letters home? Because I know at the end of last year, students did not receive who their teacher would be the following year.
Yeah, the letters will be go, the letters will be going home. We're anticipating Monday of next week, and I believe contractually, teachers should have their class list by Monday. My goal is to have them out by the end of the week. Thank you.
No further discussion, moving on to agenda item number eight, school committee action. A, approval of the one-year transportation contract with AA Transportation?
So moved.
Is the motion a second?
Second.
Motion seconded by Ms. Condon, discussion? No discussion, all those in favor? Opposed?
I abstain.
Abstention, one abstention. Motion passes. Moving on to B, vote to approve any day shift, Southbridge Police Officer as attendance officer for the school district. Mr. Page?
Yeah, I recommend that we table this item, because we need to get some clarification from the superintendent and probably the police chief in terms of the legal description of what this position is, and have the specific names of the officers that will serve the district in this role, to make sure that they're certified by DESI.
Do you want to postpone?
Postpone, yeah, postpone.
Is the motion to postpone till the next meeting? Do I hear a second? Is the motion a second? Discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Postpone till the next meeting. Moving on to C, vote to appoint Dr. Cynthia Wilson-Gorillo, the school physician for the school district, for the 2015-2016 year, for $6,500. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion? If there's no discussion, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to D, vote to approve fiscal year 2016 operating budget in the amount of $25,574,689. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Is the motion a second? Discussion? Mr. Jovan, then, Squinny?
Yeah, just for the public out there, and members of the committee that weren't at the budget meeting, when we discussed the budget and the line items, it was discussed that due to the fact that we have to shake out who the salary line items may change when we get new positions in, that we would put this as a placeholder, as those line items, and then when we move forward at our next budget meeting in late September, we would have a better idea of what those salary line items would be, and then at that point, we could make any adjustments into different categories and make adjustments to that budget.
Ms. Quinny?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had questions, I guess, to Mr. Jovan's point, that we received other memos discussing financial implications of, like, the total management solutions, and then we have, under executive session, non-union personnel FY16 salaries. So, I felt like if we're going to discuss those in executive session, approving the budget, that that discussion might have an impact on seemed kind of cart before the horse.
If I may, yeah, basically, that, those kinds of things are probably always going to happen throughout a year after you have an adopted budget for a school system. This budget that is, we're, we're voting to approve tonight is actually an official approval of the original line item budget that was proposed by then Superintendent Ms. Stanton, and so it actually gives us a legal document to start the year, and which we absolutely have to have. And we realize we will be making some adjustments to the individual line items, and those will require school committee votes going forward. Thank you.
Just a point of clarification, does the, the new budget include this administrative sheet, or is it just what was actually handed? So, it's, we've got a couple of different things going on. He's shaking his head yes, and you're shaking your head no.
It depends which answer you want to hear.
I just want to know what I'm voting on, is what I'd like.
So, there was recognition that even if, if you were to open up the workbook, the budget workbook, and go under any, any school, the salaries that are listed, and the people attached to those salaries are in, in vast number, either some of the folks have moved to a different school, some of the folks have been replaced by other teachers, et cetera, some people's lanes have moved, et cetera. So, there was recognition at the BNF Subcommittee, Budget Finance Subcommittee, that the bottom line of the budget, it was, it was requested, and we will deliver on this, that we ultimately produce an extensive spreadsheet moving through this year. So, we take the bottom line of the budget, and then anything that we, where we need, let's say, for instance, we need to adjust the Eastford Road School's salary figure from your workbook, that we literally spell out in a spreadsheet that will be totally available to the school committee. Our total salaries was this, we need it, now that everyone has landed, we need it to be at this. Our salaries for district-wide administrators was at this, we need for it to be at this, understanding fully that there's no malleability by way of the final number of the budget. So, we have to be able to show all of those by line in the budget of what's up and down, largely because we don't have the forensic data to back up the budget figures.
So, this one? Or this?
So, those numbers are, those numbers are being captured in our revised spreadsheet but will not deviate in total from the operating budget.
And will they deviate in categories?
Probably marginally because it could be that we had a principal that was budgeted at a particular salary and the person might be a little higher, a little lower. But when I say, you would have to look at the materiality of it because nothing is substantial in that regard.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're quite welcome.
Just to Ms. Quinney's point, I understand the frustration with the budget and we had quite a lengthy discussion about how to best manage this budget going forward because this is one of the biggest oversights that the school committee has. And given the fact that we really need to get a handle with Mr. Latoya who's coming up later on, to really delve into, Mr. Bishop had identified some line items that didn't even have anything appropriated in. And so, we need to really flesh out those things. And we would have a better sense later on when we get those salary line items captured, what additional monies then we could move into different line items. So, it is going to be a work in progress, but it's something that I know the budget Subcommittee is taking very seriously. And I think in September, we'll have a better report and a more finite budget line item.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that whatever we have is all that we're spending and then when we have people landing, they're not landing over.
The bottom line will be what it is. Being an alternate, I was at the meeting, this is going to be a total reconstruction as we go along. We can't stop. The kids are coming to school. The budget is in place. We need to vote a document that we can work off of. And I think that it will evolve as we move forward.
Just to go to Ms. Quinney's point, I understand her point about making sure that we're not paying people more than what was budgeted. The only caveat to that I would, I would add is that in any hiring of staff, we may be replacing a, a teacher that had only been here two years and we may grab a teacher that may come up from another district that would be at a, at a higher salary due to master's degree. So, I, I don't want it to be said that, well, it's absolute that nobody would be paid at a higher step than what is in that budget because depending on how people come into the district at their different steps, it may be different.
Well, I just think that there's a significant difference and this is where we're starting and there might be some shifts within categories to accommodate things as opposed to we are reconstructing the entire document that we're about to vote on. Those are two very different things.
Oh, no, no, we're not.
Well, that's what we're just saying.
That we're not reconstructing the entire document.
Thank you very much.
Any other discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to E, vote to approve the revised Director of Finance job description. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Is the motion a second? Discussion. Ms. Quinney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. I have a multitude of concerns regarding the Director of Finance job description. And I'm assuming that the new one was just correcting Director of Finance and Operations. So, it was missed. Okay, I just wanted to make sure I captured that. Regarding what this job description entails, one of the things, in addition to overseeing a $25.5 million budget, grants, facilities, is also the revolving accounts, the supervising technology, which especially at the beginning of this year is an astronomical undertaking given that we're transitioning from ANET to MAP. That is no small feat and I'm also concerned that we didn't get funding in order to do that, how financially that's going to happen. That's a concern as well as managing transportation, managing, supervising food service and serving as a collective bargaining agent and administering all contracts for non-instructional staff. I do not know how it is physically possible for anyone to do all of those things and do it well, especially not having a background in such a overwhelming job.
Point of information, if I, to my, the previous speaker's point, I want to make sure we delineate this job description as opposed to any potential candidate. Okay? So, we should be talking about the job description itself as opposed to anybody else that may potentially have that position.
Fair enough. I don't know how any one person could do all of these things and do it well, including responding to any transportation issues that arise, any bus issues that arise, supervising and evaluating directors of food service, business staff, dealing with any grievances of non-instructional staff, overseeing all contractual obligations and resolutions of contractual issues, supervising the technology department and implementing technology support systems to facilitate effective management of district to support instruction. This is, this job description, responsibility for interviewing, recommending for hire and training employees, planning, assigning and directing work, appraising performance, rewarding and disciplining employees and addressing complaints and resolving all problems. This is a gigantic job description for one person. That is my concern.
Sure, if I may. Sure. It actually, you know, in my previous, my previous district, we had a business manager. And largely, the job description here, there's nothing that you didn't name, Ms. Quinney, that that business manager did not oversee. We had three, three school committees, three districts, three operating budgets and one person with the same exact staffing level in the business office that we have as one district. So, you know, other than from my experience in running three districts in tandem concurrently, you know, there, there is little, and I, I hear what you're saying and I, and I appreciate the, very much the lens through which you're seeing that. I think there's little doubt that there'll be very close relationship between one of our senior network folks, myself and Ms. Stanton this year, will, will have to play a more active role with technology largely because it has extensive ramifications with respect to our capital improvements, with our preparedness on an instructional level for, for the MAP assessment. Quite frankly, for a, for a potential move to PARK assessment, should, should the state move in that direction. So, from an instructional perspective, I think that element gets largely lifted for purposes of this year for sure, that Ms. Stanton and I will have to, and look forward to, quite honestly, playing an active role in, in that capacity. Mr. Bishop mentioned, you know, food service is one of the bargaining units that we, we really have to work with in terms of the contract. So, that too, in terms of the food service, will be something that touches the negotiation Subcommittee. It touches the superintendent's office and is something that we'll be discussing, I think, in executive session coming up as well. So, there is a great deal there. We have, we have some very talented staff in the business office and literally the same exact staffing level in my previous district with a forty, almost $41 million operating budget for three districts. So, that's the best lens through which I can say that it's a, it's a doable job with the supports in place. Mr. Joe Van?
Are you finished, Ms. Quinney?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, certainly, I understand Ms. Quinney's concerns on some of this, but I, I look at it really as a, whatever the individual as a Director of Finance, we, we've had that Director of Finance, business manager model in the past that had all those responsibilities built in. And it is doable as long as you, you have the staff. And quite honestly, if I were to look back six, seven years ago when we had the business manager, the level of the staff that is currently in that finance office has substantially grown from what we had in the previous model where that one individual had all those oversight. So, I, I think the district has done a good job in bringing additional resources to the business officer office to lighten the load as a finance director. So, I, I understand those concerns and you would hope when you talk about, okay, they oversee contractual things. I'm hoping the district doesn't have that many contractual things that a business manager is so keen on. Well, two contracts to negotiate, but the school committee's responsibility is negotiations. The responsibility of the business manager is to be present as a resource to be able to assist the school committee in providing what the financial parameters are and what the implication of any increase would be. So, I see the business manager in the past is their only obligation is to be that financial resource. If I say, look, we're going to negotiate a 1% increase, what does that mean to the district? That's their, that's their, and they should be able to have that and prepared with the parameters before we even go into negotiation. So, they, my experience with negotiations, they play a big part but a minor part in the actual negotiation of contracts. So, I think it's a doable job and I agree with this job description.
If I may?
Ms. Quinney?
Through you, to the previous speaker, I believe previously, we had a Director of Finance and Operations, but we also had a Director of Technology and we also had someone whose job was grants oversight. So, those things are now being combined into this job at this time.
Back to the previous speaker. I'm going back, six years ago in this district, where we only had a business manager, one person that oversaw technology, the busing, the food service. I mean, it's a doable job. I mean, there's no, and they did not have the resources in that business office that we have now with grants management database. You have a database person now in the office. You have a grants manager that works in the office. You have an accounts payable and accounts receivable. We didn't have that. We had the business manager, a payroll person and one other person. So, with all due respect to, to that, that yes, the district did break out those directors into those specific categories, but I, I see that the district has the resources to do this.
Any other questions?
I'd just like to comment. Earlier this evening, Superintendent Bliss mentioned that we have one ELL teacher for the high school, one ELL teacher for the middle school. And he, he referenced the fact that we have to look at personnel and how we're deploying them and how we're spending 80% of our budget because that's about what it's costing us for staffing. I see this as very doable with the number of people supporting the finance director or business, the finance director. We have enough people to support, to handle those telephone calls about the busing. So, I, I really feel very comfortable in this. My only thing I would like to add or discuss on this is, is the licensure from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed is said preferred. I think, and I, I know, I understand the person who's a candidate is, is, is moving into this position with the vote of the committee, I guess. I would like to see a timeline, not just because of, this gentleman doesn't have it, but I would like to see a timeline for, for any, this gentleman or any future business manager to, to become licensed by the district. Is there a reasonable expectation of time to attain that certification?
So, the one who aspires to secure the license would go through MASBO, the Massachusetts Association of School Business Offices or Officials. And it's quite a rigorous course, actually. Mr. Latoya has already mentioned an interest in, in pursuing that on some level, clearly out of the gate. It's, it's a very solid program to go through for anyone, whether you're aspiring business manager or aspiring superintendent. It's, and you can, what's, what's great about it, you can actually take particular modules out of the MASBO. So, we're actually already supporting somebody in the business office who's doing a lot of our HR work. She takes advantage of some of the HR components from the MASBO program.
Just as a point of information, could we, could we go back? I, I objected to Ms. Quinney's position to do that. I, I agree when we talk about this job description, Mr. Bishop. I would say that the school committee should have on this job description for, that I would agree with you, that perhaps we should put a parameter into this job description that any future candidate that goes to the Director of Finance position within one year, if we could add that to the job description. Well, I just didn't want to talk about the individual person.
I think that probably.
Excuse me, hold on, hold on.
Mr. Bishop brought up a point about putting a timeframe.
The reason why I let the discussion go is because it does belong, if they want to amend this job description for all future.
That's my point of information. I believe that if Mr. Bishop wishes to put that as an amendment, I would support that, but we shouldn't be, we should be just talking about this job description.
And I, I would just, was asking the superintendent, what is a reasonable expectation for someone to, anybody, to, to get this certification? Is it a year process? Is it a five-year process? I'm just asking, because I would like to amend this, but I would like a reasonable timeframe.
My point was just that we got into a discussion about an individual. Let's keep it to this job description.
Right. And if Mr. Bishop would like to add the amendment, he would like to know the timeframe that would be respectful. That's why I allowed the discussion to ask the superintendent the question under the job description.
Thank you.
So, continue.
It would probably be fair to, if there were an amendment, to say, because we would have to look at when the next course even begins and, and the timing and whatnot. So, I'd like to be a little more liberal than a year in, in that, with that respect because what if the sequence begins, what if it began two weeks ago?
Mr. Chair, just, just, I don't, personally don't think that that necessarily language needs to be in the job description itself for like, you're advertising the job, this is what it does. That kind of language would probably come under contract. When you're going to do a contract with a person, if they're not certified, would be the superintendent would say, you've got to, we're going to accept you under this contract, but you've got to work towards this, whatever, and the expectation is you secure that license in two years or something like that. I'm not sure that necessarily has to be in.
If, if we go and put it into the job description for, for the future, somebody can apply for this job without the certification, knowing they're applying that they have to get it in two years. That's the only reason why I was leaning towards what Mr. Bishop was saying. If you do it with just this contract, it's just for this person, it's not for the next contract is what I'm saying. I'd rather put a parameter into the contract that this job description would have it in it before, during and after the one that's going into it.
Good point. So, I retract that.
Mr. Joe Van?
Yeah, just to echo your comment, Mr. Lazlo, is that, oh, Mr. Chairman, is that I, I agree with your point because what ends up happening is any future school committee will just say, well, your job description doesn't say that. We really have to be careful on intent. So, I would, I would vote to approve this or I'd like to make an amendment that it be preferred and obtained, that the kid, or that has to be obtained within, I, I don't know, because MASBO does run the certification programs. It depends what, what time of year that we, we do this. So, if it's within two years or they must enroll within, it's preferred and that they must enroll in the next available MASBO certification course after employment. Because that would put a timeline in if they, if they're, so we're not saying within two years, it's, it's.
Do you want to make, would you rather say two years instead of the next class? Because two years, if the person, say hypothetically, does not.
My, my motion is to amend that it's preferred and must, must obtain certification within two years of appointment.
Second.
Is the motion a second as an amendment to the job description? Discussion on that. Ms. Quinney?
Thank you. Would it rather be or? So, preferred or, so if you have it, that's great. Or you'll be licensed.
I think that's the intent.
Yeah, that, that was my intent. Thank you for that clarification.
Any other discussion on the amendment? All those, go ahead, Ms. Quinney.
Could we read that amendment again, please?
So, my, the intent is that valid Massachusetts School Business Administrator licensure issued by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, preferred, or they mu.
Or obtained within two years.
Or obtained within two years of appointment.
I, I, but must be obtained.
It must be. That, that what, yes, I did say.
But must be obtained within two years.
Or.
Or must be obtained within two years.
Or must be obtained.
Because the way this is worded.
All right. That works. You got that, Mr. Bishop?
Mr. Joe Van, you got that?
So.
On the amendment?
Preferred, preferred, or at the end must, it has to say, or must be obtained within two years of appointment.
We're all set? Any further discussion on the amendment? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to the main motion. We already have a motion, a second on this. As amended, any further discussion? If none, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? One, one opposition? Motion passes. Moving on to F, vote to, and this is a typo, it's not to appoint, we do not appoint this position, we confirm. Vote to confirm Mr. William Latoya as the Director of Finance. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion, motion and second? Discussion. Ms. Quinney?
Mr. Chair, I. Mr. Chair, I have significant concerns about appointing or confirming the appointment of someone that doesn't have licensure nor experience in this role. I think the job description as approved is a tremendous, and as I've said, I don't believe possible, although others disagree. And to ask someone to step into that role with no experience and not being licensed, I think, is not fair to that person. Thank you.
Any other discussion? No further discussion? All those in favor of the confirmation? Opposed? Moving on to G. Vote to approve the Director Maintenance and Facilities position and associated job description.
So.
There's a motion by Mr. Jovan.
Second.
By Ms. Condon. There's no discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? H. Vote to approve the Middle School Associate Principal position.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I'm going to recuse myself from any discussion or vote on this item, and I'm going to leave the dais starting this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Vote to approve the Middle School Associate Principal position and associated job description. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion and second, discussion. Ms. Quinney.
Thank you. I just, Mr. Chair, I had a question on the second page, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. The eighth bullet point down provides policy. Can somebody just clarify what that is?
Mr. Bliss.
What the intent of that is.
Provides policy and structure. It reads, for the audience, provides policy and structure for discipline within the school and to provide assistance as may be needed. So I would see that as a recommendation. For instance, some of our building leaders have already brought forward to myself and to Ms. Stanton, suggested changes to policy with the full understanding that policy then comes before the Policy Subcommittee. So we're keeping a running list of policies that we're running into maybe some issues with, or things that we're finding in the field that need to be updated. So we see it as being a close partnership with the School Committee, with Policy Subcommittee, to make sure that, to the extent that School Committee keeps its eye on the MAS C guidelines on policy, we're watching our professional associations to MAS S, et cetera. Thank you.
Ms. Jovan.
Through you, well, I support this position, and especially in light of reading the AIP Fourth Quarter Report, where it said, "High and growing failure rates at both the middle and high school point to an unsuccessful learning environment with little evidence of improvement." That's, I think that all this can do, this position, is to enhance what is needed up there to make that building successful. So I full-heartedly approve of this. This was the concept that we envisioned when we went to vote and put this new building, that's now three years in effect. That was the concept that we had, and I look forward to the changes that will take place up there. I think we can build a very good, well, we have built a very good team so far, and this can only enhance that position. Thank you.
Dr. Page.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I just have a couple of sort of minor clarification questions, I guess. Where it says, very first sentence, Middle School Associate Principal Job Description, Middle School Associate Principal is responsible for the overall leadership and management of the school. We still have one building, and so I'm just wondering if, for language purpose, that should say grade six through eight. Just be clear. And so, and the other, the other question I have is, under qualifications, is there a DESC education licensure as an associate principal, or is there principal license, or?
It's assistant principal slash principal, so I have, I hold that certification.
Okay, so then.
But it's literally one.
So what, so associate, the licensure actually shouldn't be associate principal, which should be.
It should read assistant.
Right.
Yeah.
Slash, okay.
Would it be okay, Dr. Page, if, on that, back to the first sentence, where it said management of the school, and then perhaps parenthetically, we put grades six through eight?
Yeah, yeah.
And then maybe similarly, on the high school principal job description, maybe we should say, then parenthetically, grades nine through 12.
Right. That's, I mean, just to make it clear.
If that's the will of the committee?
And then the only other thing under extracurricular and community involvement, the last bullet point, I think, well, not the last one, the last one on the second page, supervises student activities for all grades, again, maybe six through eight, because it says on the top, assistant cafeteria supervision for grades six through eight. I know these are minor little housekeeping things, but that's all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Quinney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I hadn't quite finished. The last bullet under Supervision Fiscal Management, responsible for the evaluation of certified staff, includes nurses and counselors, secretaries, and any other administrator directly reporting to him/her. My understanding has been that nurses and counselors report to the Director of People Personnel Services. Are we shifting that?
No, we're not. You know, one of the things that it's, it's an interesting thing, because in practice, those folks report to the PPS Director, and it's true of a lot of school districts, but under Ed Reform of 93, technically, anyone under the roof of a school building is the responsibility of the principal of that school. So we get into, I'm open for suggestions on how we could, you know, maybe wordsmith that so that we're consistent with, you know, Ed Reform 93, but at the same time, reflecting that our actual practice is that those folks are evaluated by the PPS Director. I mean, maybe we want to be as explicit as that.
Well, I just, I was unclear, because I just thought that it was the role of the Personal People Services Director to supervise, evaluate nurses and guidance counselors, that they reported to them. So I just didn't know how that fleshed out in this description.
Sure. So on both the middle school and high school, why don't we say, then, that the respective Associate Principal or Principal for the high school is responsible for daily supervision of, but the evaluation piece is, in fact, does reside with the PPS Director? That's true to law and true to practice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then under extracurricular involvement, as well as Supervision Fiscal Management, it talks about administering and counting for designated expenditures, including building activities funds, and then supervising the athletic departments, and responsible for internal control of student funds. So previously, we had had a stipended position of Treasurer, and that had been discussed as being shifted to a role of another Administrative Assistant at the middle high school. That had been previously discussed. Would now the role of the Principal be taking on that responsibility?
So what happened in that case with the Treasurer position, it's obviously a great and germane example, is, for instance, Principal Earls solicited some assistance from the Administrative Assistance on the high school side, and we were able to put that together, but I see it still as being directed by the Principal, executed by support staff.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Jovan.
Through you to Mr. Bliss. Mr. Bliss, just as a thought, we clearly want to have two Principals up there with each distinct roles. Could you explain to me, in the absence of one Principal, say, the high school Principal is out, the one that's managing the high school side?
Yes.
That person is out.
Yes.
Where do those duties then fall? Is it going to go to the Assistant Principal?
Yes.
Or is the Associate Principal on the other side going to oversee that? How is that going to work?
It stays nuclear to the side of the House. So responsibilities in Miss Earls' absence fall to Mr. Kikase, and the absence of the Associate Principal at the middle school fall to Mr. Wallace, who's the Assistant Principal of that side of the House.
Okay.
I'm using the vernacular of House, just to segregate. We had some discussion around, in a, in an issue where we have interruption of utilities, or if we had to go into a lockdown situation, we've already processed that. Because that's a security measure, I'd be happy to discuss that in executive session as to how we've determined administratively, but I wouldn't want to discuss that publicly in terms of how we've decided a lockdown situation would be triaged, but suffice it to say that we've identified that as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? There's no further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous, of all present. Like to note, Mr. Bishop is coming back. Moving on to Agenda Item I. Vote to approve the Elementary Behavioral Interventionist Assistant Principal Position and Associated Job Description.
So moved. Second.
Is a motion a second? Discussion. Ms. Quinney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to Mr. Bliss. I've read this, and it's very heavy on the Behavior Interventionist side, however, I didn't see anything about her forming teacher evaluations, or learning walks, or providing feedback, or any sort of those Assistant Principal roles within the job description.
So a number of the bullet points on the second page, oversee, assess and make recommendations for the improvement of the quality of instruction, instructional practices and systems at the school, mentor and demonstrate best instructional practices among the staff and teachers, design and oversee the implementation of comprehensive systems to provide targeted support for students, provide strategic director for, it should be directorship for principals in the establishment of data-driven instruction, provide school leaders tools of support, responsible for all student discipline. There should be a caveat in here, because these individuals will, for sure, have an active role in the evaluation. So we will canvas this and make sure that's added. That's the fundamental distinction.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? If no further discussion, I'm sorry, Ms. Quinney.
So that will be as amended?
Absolutely.
As that, with evaluation written in?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous, of all present.
Mr. Lazlo, can I just revisit one? Just a quick question on the, I see that in the middle school, or the Assistant Principal, it's an 11-month position. What are the terms for Middle School Associate Principal and Principal? Because it's not listed on the job description. What is that length of term?
We work 365 days a year.
So that's a 12-month.
I'm kidding, but no, that's a 12-month position.
Principals are 12 months?
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Right, team?
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Lazlo?
Go ahead, Ms. Jovan.
Could we take a two-minute break, if you don't mind?
We'll take a two-minute break.
Uh-huh. Or five, if you don't mind?
Oh, five-minute break? Take a five-minute break.
Because we're getting into handbook and.
I'd like to call the school committee back into order after a brief break. Moving on to Agenda Item J. Vote to approve the revised Athletic Coaching Positions for the 2015-16 school year. Where a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Is a motion and a second? Discussion. Ms. Quinney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had concerns regarding the budget impact of changing the Track Coach to two head Track Coaches, and also the notation at the end that states that it is recognized that School Committee approval of these proposed changes authorizes Administration to engage the SEA Executive Board. I believe that creation of positions would be one motion, and authorizing the Superintendent or Administration to enter into negotiations would be another motion.
Sure. To the point on the tracks, so the suggestions were brought forward by our Athletic Director, and with respect to indoor track, the notion was to be able to have a head coach for the boys, as it were, the boys' team, and a head coach for the girls' team, to essentially take the dollars assigned to what is now the head coach and the assistant coach, and split those apart, so there's no budget implication, but so that we had a distinct head coach for the boys and a head coach for the girls. So again, no budget implication, but so that there was a coach specific to the gender of the team, and there was also no Title IX implication thereby, because it would be treated equitably.
The, to that point, when we had researched it, it seemed that there was, indoor track doesn't have gender-specific.
Right.
Events, and that's how most districts did it, was a head coach and an assistant coach. Because in spring track, there are gender-specific events in which someone would need to coach boys versus coaching girls, as opposed to all the events were the same.
Right. This came forward, it was, and that's my experience too, Ms. Quinney, actually, from my previous district, was that we had, it was a, as it were, a co-ed team. And this came forward as a request, so given that it was budget-neutral, and it was the Athletic Director's suggestion that we move in this direction, we wanted to at least bring her suggestion forward to this dais. And the other was, we just would never want the School Committee to think that we would just sort of certainly unilaterally move forward, and just that if this was through, that we would then approach the SEA, just to make sure with your approval.
Well, in the past, it has, positions were created outside of the knowledge of the School Committee, and stipends were added that were outside of the contract. That's why I want to be explicitly clear that that would be not one vote, but two votes.
Yep.
And if we can add that somewhere in this indoor track, that it would be the head coach salary added to the assistant coach salary divided by two in order to fund those positions?
Right.
That would give some clarity to the lack of a budget implication of that.
That's a great point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Duly noted.
Ms. Jovan.
Just to clarify this, I agree with the previous speaker's point about the contract negotiations, and that would be concerning to me as well, that we have positions. I'm just, do we need a second vote? It should be understood that no one can create positions and fund it without School Committee's approval. So your point's well taken, that you duly, do we, the Superintendent knows our intention going forward, that no position is, do we need a specific vote as a point of procedure, I guess?
Not, not for me, but moving forward, it's obviously the will of the committee in terms of taking a vote.
So, that's just, so I, do we either just remove that note entirely from this proposal with the proviso that the Superintendent does understand that? Anything that, I think typically in the past, in my previous experience, was the fact that any time something was created, or that there was an implication of a potential issue with any bargaining unit, the Superintendent would come to the School Committee and say, hey, look, we need to impact bargain, we need to negotiate this. That should be a standard operating procedure.
Yes, it should.
So I guess my point is, my recommendation would be to remove that, because it really shouldn't even be in this proposal, the note.
But you'll take the vote separately per Ms. Quinney's suggestion that the Superintendent be duly authorized through a separate vote to bring this forward to SEA? If I understand your point correctly, Ms. Quinney?
Yes, that would be my recommendation, in that the past practice has kind of not gone the way that it should have, in order to clarify that this is how such positions are moved forward in the districts, to set a new, clearly defined.
Roles.
Roles and process.
Perfect.
Thank you.
So is a motion and a second? Any further discussion?
So, oh, well.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
So are we leaving that note in with a second vote, or are we just removing the note?
I understood to be that that note would be stricken from here, that there would be a subdivision of the indoor track with respect to the proceeds, the budget dollars, to make that clear, and that this body would then take two votes, one to allow these changes to take place, and the other for authorizing me to bring it forward to SEA.
Okay. And I guess, I wasn't part of the previous school committee, where they had the discussion about the middle school football team, and that's part of this proposal as well. So I guess, we had added the freshman football team probably about four or five years ago at the request, or maybe longer than that, Mr. Bishop? You were Principal at the time?
We had that, Mr. Jovan, back as early as the 90, 2002, 2003, that era. We had freshmen. We may have eliminated it.
It was eliminated at one point, then we brought it back, because, I remember the discussions quite vividly, that Papa Warner was no longer doing a certain age group, so they came to the School Committee, the Athletics Department came to the School Committee and said, we would like to put a freshman program in place. All the districts have a freshman program. I've never heard of a middle school program. I have concerns about that, what impact this may have transportation-wide, as to what other schools have middle school teams, because I'm looking at districts now that are cutting athletics at the middle school level due to budgetary impacts. I fully support the fact that we need additional athletic venues for our students, because that's important, as long... as well as all the other academically, arts, music. But, I don't have enough information right now with this middle school proposal to take a vote as to where are they playing, how many schools are involved, what's the distance, what's the impact for our transportation budget? So, I don't know if I'm prepared to vote on a middle school proposal. I'm all for the volleyball. Volleyball has become a big sport. I'm all for indoor track, because that was a program that we put in place that brought tremendous amount of students' ability to participate in sports. We had lots of numbers in that. But, I do have a concern on this middle school football. I don't feel I have enough information on that particular proposal to switch from a freshman to a middle school concept.
I just want to point out information. I won't be supporting the football one, and I'm pretty heavy into that sport. I don't think it's advantageous to the kids, because there was a program that already provides youth football, much like soccer and baseball and girl's sports. They start at a youth level, and you try and network it with your schools, so when you get into your middle school, high school, that you've played the sport of choice, girl or boy, all the way through. This here is almost like a stutter step in this line of football. So, I'm not going to be supporting the football one, but if it's going to be voted together, I'm voting no. But, I would like to maybe take it separately, if the committee feels fair. Go ahead, Jack.
Just through you to Ms. Earl. Ms. Earl, when does the volleyball season? So, that is a fall season. So, we would need a vote, so that we could...
Hire the coaching staff, yes. And just know that we're going to field it, or not field, but put the team on the floor, I guess. Yes.
And do we have enough students that wish to participate in a volleyball program?
Volleyball was a robust and a successful program last year. Yes.
I would like to amend this and remove the football part of this out right now, and perhaps have the athletic department come before us at the next meeting for the middle school football concept. But, I would fully support the volleyball and the indoor track.
There's an amendment on the floor to delete football from this proposal.
And to bring that back at another meeting.
Bring it back for a presentation at another meeting. Ms. Quinney?
I would request that we separate all three out, as I've articulated my concerns regarding having a varsity volleyball program, knowing that some of our girls aren't able to participate at that level.
Can we vote on the amendment that is in front of us? And then, if you want to amend it after... Right now, the discussion is on the amendment. Did we have a second on that, Max?
Nope.
To amend the deletion of the football? Who seconded it?
Nobody.
That's Mr. Joe Vance, I meant.
It's just a motion?
I would draw my amendment, and I'll make an amendment that we separate this into three distinct categories.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to make this three separate votes. Any discussion? All those in favor? In unanimous?
Mr. Lazlo, I wish to postpone to the next meeting the issue of the middle school football, and ask, request the football coaches and athletic director to be present to make a formal proposal to the school committee.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Or through, if Mr. Bliss can make a...
I wouldn't want to bring out our coaching staff, quite frankly, but our athletic director would be, I think, appropriate.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
It's a motion and a second to postpone this to a next meeting? Do I hear a second?
I just... did you already say there was a second?
Second.
No, he didn't say a second, so I just...
I didn't get a second yet.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ms. Gondon. Discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to Superintendent Bliss. I know that they had previously held sign-ups for the football and volleyball without the actual teams, or without the actual go-ahead, but do we know how many students were interested in this middle school football team?
I don't have the numbers, but certainly the athletic director can bring all that forward on, if the desire is for August, the August 25th meeting.
So, my question would be if they could, if the athletic director could answer the question of how many middle school students signed up for the football team, for this middle school team, as well as what other teams that they would be playing, if there are enough teams that they would be playing.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think in this... am I reading something wrong? It says, "Fall interest signups, 36 age-appropriate students. Athletes showed interest in a middle school football program at SMHS."
Okay.
All right, so that's known. And my understanding also from the... I mean, this is like the third or fourth time this has been brought up to us. What you're not seeing here is the backstory, and supposedly, a lot of the ideology of this came out of a meeting with Swickel, where it was discussed, that level, that there just weren't enough freshman football teams in the league, and that middle school football was becoming more appropriate. That's the backstory on where this is coming from. So, now, I think we're going to have to probably go back and have the athletic director bring that data to the committee again.
Mr. Chairman, through you to Superintendent. Thank you for that information. I echo Ms. Congdon's point, though. Let's get a schedule. Let's see how many true schools are out there, what the distances would be, and what the financial impact of that transportation may be, to really see what the... It's all well and good to say that middle school has interest, what middle schools, how far will our students be traveling? You know, we have to take that into account. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor to postpone it to the next meeting? Against? One against. Motion passes to postpone. Moving on to volleyball. Do I hear a motion to bring, to vote in the approval of the volleyball program?
So moved.
Motion by Dr. Page, seconded by Ms. Gondon. Discussion? Ms. Quinney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My concern is that we might have 31 female students who are interested. The challenge is that not all of the girls are able to play at the varsity level, and that's kind of noted, that they're going to have an abbreviated schedule. I would hate to have a program that was successful and positive for our students, and then add a varsity team on and have that be more challenging and difficult and less successful for the kids, and then have that put in place. I'd rather see that we continue with the junior varsity program to develop the skills of the girls before we're adding a varsity program in addition to the JV. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Ms. Gondon?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Previously, I had questioned that to what Ms. Quinney's point was to the athletic director, and the answer was that the schedule, when she met with the other teams, was based on a first-year volleyball team, and their competitors would be... they would be competing with that first-year team. So, that was my understanding to that point.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? In unanimous of all present?
No.
Oh, one abstention, I'm sorry, one against. I'm sorry, Ms. Quinney. Moving on to indoor track. Do I hear a motion to approve? Is a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Gondon. Discussion? Mr. Joe?
Just so I understand, so, and I know it was explained before that it was a combined co-ed team, so are we just looking to make two coaches on an equal basis? Is that what we're doing?
Yes, except for the same, for the same dollars. The dollars are appropriated for, if you look in the contract, there was a position for a head coach and assistant coach. We will commingle those dollars, divide it by two, have a head coach, have a coach for the boys and a coach for the girls.
But, it's still a co-ed team? Competing indoor?
Yeah, yeah.
That's fine with me. I don't oppose that. Thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Abstention? In unanimous of all present? Moving on to K. Vote to approve the Eastwood Road School 2015-2016 handbook supplement.
So moved.
There's a motion by Mr. Joe Vance, seconded by Ms. Gondon. Discussion?
If I could just add, before we sort of open it broadly to discussion about the handbook, so there has been, the team has worked very hard. One of our principals has been in position for about 48 hours by contract, so, yeah, 24 hours, actually. I don't think the ink is dry yet, Kathleen, but you're still sitting there, so that's a good sign. So, we want to make sure that we say that one of the suggestions that came forward was potentially for next year, is to have an L1, you know, elementary school handbook that is, because clearly, there was a desire to marry the Charlton Street School and the West Street School handbooks. Mr. Dr. Page, before the meeting, came up with some non-substantive changes, things about formatting and whatnot that he handed off, that have been handed off now to the respective principals of the building. So, if there are, if there are changes along those lines that are largely non-substantive, that is to say immaterial, more to do with formatting, would be happy to receive those in a different kind of context, rather than discussing them, per se, if that's okay with the chair.
Any other discussion? Ms. Quinney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And this is true for all of the handbooks. Under special ed transportation, it's the page 17, it has the sped team chair as the person to contact, and then the director of people and personnel services. I would recommend that we add AA Transportation's phone number, because if you have a child that is on a special ed bus, you need to cancel with AA. Otherwise, AA will come. You might call the sped team chair and say, "My student doesn't need a bus today," but that bus is still coming unless AA is notified. So, that would be true of all, that would be a recommendation for all of the handbooks.
Does the team have any concern with that at all?
I would, Ms. Quinney, it's a really good point, and actually, when we met, and this goes back to your point about the director of finance job description, actually, because when we met with AA Transportation, we met with the CEO, and we met with the dispatcher in my office a couple of weeks ago, and one of the things we asked of AA Transportation was, they will be the first responders to concerns, so that our phones aren't ringing off the hook. So, that's really a notice to parents as well, that when there's a concern about a bus stop and a bus route and yada, 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 and all that stuff happens at the beginning of the school year, those concerns, we pay good money to AA Transportation, and they can and should and are willing to provide that service. So, I think for all of the handbooks globally, if we hadn't caught that change, to say that the first point of contact with respect to transportation should be AA, and we can list their phone number accordingly. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any further discussion? Mr. Joe Vance?
I'm sorry, just from my knowledge, we call it a supplement. Why? Is there a different, is there a district handbook that goes out? Just explain that to me.
This is sort of the companion, or the supplement, to the larger handbook. And the reason the larger handbook isn't brought up, the only changes that are being made to that handbook, we've scoured it over the past few days, myself and Katie. The only changes that need to be made to that are literally on the cover with the date and the contact people. So, if that handbook needed any changes, and that's largely a credit to the policy subcommittee and folks on the school committee that have worked hard on policy, and that has actually rippled through, and those things that needed to be changed were changed in the large handbook. So, these are the supplements that are germane to each building, and I think that's the genesis behind that. Ms. Quinney or Ms. Congdon, I'm sure, are the resident experts.
So, is that district handbook posted on the website?
Will be. We're in the process right now of inserting the CS calendar, switching people's titles, contact numbers, that kind of thing, but that will be loaded as much as these will be too, yes.
And then, a parent gets Eastwood Road supplement how? How are these distributed to parents, staff?
Yep, absolutely. So, we want to be consistent. Ms. Kripzak, are you able to speak to the, how the distribution of the... hello? How the distribution of the handbook is handled, and confirmation of receipt? So, we're sure parents sign.
And I believe this is true for all elementary schools. We used to give paper handouts at orientation to all families, but for budgetary issues and cost of paper, what we were doing is putting it online, and then at orientation and notices going home, we had... so, if people were taking out library books, sign this form. For an image release, sign this form. For permission for something else, sign this form. So, what we did is, here's all the things we need your permission for. One is library, two is this, three is this, and four is your handbook.
Got it.
And if you do not have computer access or internet access, we please request, by not signing this or by requesting, we will send you a paper form. So, it came down to one sheet of paper that was every, pretty much everything that we needed permission and to be signed for. So, receipt of the handbook acknowledgement, they would sign that if they'd read it online. If they had not read it online, then we would send a paper copy home.
And just to the admin cabinets, it's vital that we receive that back from all families, for all students. The handbook, as we all know procedurally, is vital, that we have that acknowledgement, otherwise, there's little enforcement around it.
And sometimes, we send four and five home, or make phone calls to say, you know, this is our fourth contact, or please acknowledge.
Thank you so much, Ms. Kripzak.
You're welcome.
I'm all set. She answered the question. Thank you.
Just a couple of comments. First of all, Ms. Kripzak, I love your little box with the starting times and the tardy times. I think that's right on. The only thing other I might recommend is your appendix A. Is that a tear out? You want that brought back, signed?
I'm sorry, what page you want?
The appendix A, where the parent signs?
Yes. So, this is here when we give a paper copy?
My only suggestion would be to put that at the very end, because I see if they tear this out, we're going to, all the other stuff behind us, not going to get restapled.
Again, this is for the online, so when we send that, when we have orientation, it's like all four things, libraries, everything's there, so, okay.
I love it. Looks great.
But, if you want me to move that, I certainly will. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Not all those in favor? Opposed? In unanimous of all present? Moving on to Charlton Street School, let's see. Vote to approve Charlton Street School 2015-2016 handbook supplement.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bishop, seconded by Ms. Gondon. Discussion? Ms. Quinney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had some edits based on differences between the two that I had forwarded on, but regarding homework on page six, completion of homework is part of a student's academic success. Non-submission of homework or incomplete classwork will result in student being detained after school for completion of work. Parents and guardians will be notified and will need to make alternative arrangements for student transportation. Parents and guardians will have the option of approving work, completion of work at recess. That is new and seems punitive to me, that if a student is unable to do their homework, we're going to make their parents find a way to pick them up, as well as if students go to the Y, is there going to be a notification at a later date? I know we've implemented a after-school help session at all of the schools. Would it take place then? Can you...
Well, the plan for this, the reason behind this is, we have a lot of students that don't do homework, and homework, we are sending the message that homework and classwork is extremely important. That is the reason why we come to school. Homework is not frivolous. It is a practice of a skill being taught, and all students need to practice skills taught to reinforce them. So, at the elementary level, we don't have the option to keep kids after school, because if we try to, a lot of parents don't have transportation. So, if they do have transportation, then that won't be an issue. It isn't punitive. What it is, we're sending the message is, schoolwork is important. That's why we come to school. So, I have, in 26 years of teaching, I have never had an issue for keeping a child in to do work. Also, if they're fooling around in class, they are missing schoolwork, that work is important. If we want our children to get the message how important education is, we have to send this type of message. And to say that everyone at the elementary level can have recess, no matter what they do, we're saying the message that you do not have to do your homework, we have nothing to hold over them. Therefore, when they get to the junior high in the high school, they have learned that homework and schoolwork is not really important, because they still will get recess, and there are no consequences. So, the problem, what would be happening, is that parents will be given a call that this is repeating. If there is a reason, we are there to help. We have an hour after school that is embedded in our contract for teachers to assist students as needed. The value of it, like I said, is to stress that importance. In all the years that I've done it, I have always told children that as soon as your work is done, you may go outside. If I get your work, not a problem. If I have a reason why, if something happened, emergency, that's not a problem. We're talking repeat offenders, that if our goal is to get our kids to move forward, we have to do something.
I think I'm not disagreeing with the value...
I think I'm not disagreeing with the value of homework and schoolwork. It is not clear, however, the way that it's written, that this is for repeat offenders. I read it, and I think the first time you don't do homework, I'm calling your mom and telling them, "You're not coming home today. You have to find a way to pick them up." So I think that needs to be clarified a little bit, that this is, if it's a chronic issue or something like that.
So you would like to add the word chronic?
I would ask that it be explored a little bit further in order to clarify for families what that process would look like, and how that would be, that it would be scheduled, it wouldn't be that day. It's just not very clear the way that it's written.
Okay.
Mr. Jovan?
Mrs. Mantenio, I certainly agree with this concept. I, I think the execution of this is what's gonna be important. I think it's important to say, not say it's chronic, it's, the message is, you will do your homework, or the consequence may be that you're gonna stay in for recess. I think the message that the staff and the principals put forward is, look, teachers, you're all professionals. You make that determination that, is it chronic? Is it, is it simply that a kid had an issue at home? That's something that a teacher's gonna evolve and learn in the day-to-day management of that classroom. So I don't want to put something in here, "Well, it's only chronic." Well, now define chronic. Is it once? Is it three? Is it five? I mean, we go down that slope. I think it's important, we're sending the message, just as I've stated in the past, we're not gonna tolerate this behavior in our schools. We're gonna send a message that recess, that schoolwork is important, and I'm gonna leave it up to the professional principals that we hire to execute this plan. So I have no desire to have this changed. It's, the message is, you will do your homework, and the consequence is, you may have to stay in for recess. And I expect that the communication of these principles will be valuable in executing that plan. So I do not recommend any change to that. We send a strong message that homework is important. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other discussion?
On page eight, it's Charlton Street School Attendance Guidelines. Illness, all absences, dismissals, and tardiness will be considered unexcused except for the following. The following absences are defined as excused absences. Illness covered by a physician's note or other medical professional. In order for medical absences to be excused, a written physician's note within five school days of the absence. Our policy states that parents can excuse students and do not require a physician's note, so that would be contrary to that. And working with a multitude of physicians and having young children, I know my child gets sent home because they have a fever at nine o'clock in the morning, and at six o'clock, they no longer have a fever. I must keep them out for twenty-four hours. So therefore, they're missing the next day of school, and they may not be ill. But they, based on the policy of our sick policy, they're not allowed back into school the next day. To bring that child to a physician, pay a copayment in order to get such a note, to have the child excused, is not, I don't think, fair. And as it's written, that is in contradiction to our policy.
Any other discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Jovan?
I would just ask Mr. Bliss to research that policy to make sure that it's, that, I agree that we shouldn't be in conflict with the, with the school supplements. But if that is the case, then I think the Policy Subcommittee has to revisit that specific policy. So I agree that it is, is a hardship to go to a parent, you know, but then I don't want to go through that issue that a parent is always saying, "Well, I only have to set a DODA in, my child was sick," you know. And again, that goes to the management of the building and the principals, and their professional experience, that if a, if a student is chronically absent for illness, at some point, they have to say, "Hey, look, your child has been ill a number of times, and now you need to go see a doctor." So I think, as long as the, this isn't in conflict with our policy is, but again, I leave it up to the management of the building principals.
Right. So if we, if we were to look at policy, JH, which we've pulled up, there is a line, "Accordingly, parents will provide a written explanation for the absence or tardiness of a child," given that that is, that's codified in policy. I think on this particular line, we should reference, be consistent with the policy. I would just remind the viewing public, the School Committee, and certainly the Administrative Cabinet, that if we do have issues of chronic absenteeism, we have different levels of intervention that we can enact, including the juvenile justice system, for those folks that are chronically absent or tardy. And I would also remind everyone that it's, it's actually an offense by statute in the Commonwealth to deliberately not send your child to school. And that's, that has statutory implications as well. So to the extent that I think that we have resources available to us, I think that, and to be consistent with policy, we certainly could do that.
I think the rest of that, as Mr. Jovan referenced, all the steps, one, two, three, four, like, they cover all those excessive in the protocol that will take place. On page thirteen, Peace Builder Recess Detentions, that is, again, in conflict with the District Wellness Policy.
I think, towards the Mantenio, we made a, laid after, we made a change to that to be consistent with the language in the other part of the handbook. Did we not, I think, in Principal Katerat, I think we had changed that. That was in one of our exchanges. It didn't hit this version up here, but it hit.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Thirteen, at the top?
Page thirteen.
Yes.
Under Peace Builders, Recess Detentions. I revise it to say, detentions may be assigned to students due to non-completion of homework or classwork. Parents will be notified and required to provide transportation for after-school detention. Parents will have the opportunity to approve recess detention as an alternative.
Thank you for making that change, Principal Mantenio. Principal Katerat, is that also reflected, or will it be in West Street School?
Yes, Mrs. Mantenio and I are working together to align both handbooks to read the same.
Let's finish one school at a time.
Thanks.
Are there any, are there any other discussion? Go ahead.
Yeah, actually, this is particular to this one, but it also applies to any of these handbook supplements that have our policies listed in them. Just a matter of ease and clarification and communication, I would like to suggest that you put a heading for the policy that says, "School Committee Policy File AJA," or whatever it is, at the top, when the policy's referenced in the handbook under that. As this is written, in some of these, well, I'm looking at the high school one, for example, because that's where we reference a lot of policies. You get to the end of a paragraph, and then all of a sudden, the next word is adopted, "August twelfth, two thousand fourteen, first reading NA, second reading NA, third reading NA." You have no idea what that is. As a, as a parent reading this, what in the world are they talking about here? So I would just say, when we reference a School Committee policy, just say, "School Committee Policy File Number," what it is, then you can put the language if you want.
Is that?
I can show you.
No, no, I'm following. I just wanted to make sure the teams were okay. Principal Earls, you're okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? One opposed. Motion passes. Moving on to West Street. Vote to approve the West Street School 2015-2016 Handbook Supplement. There are motion.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion by Mr. Jovan, seconded by Ms. Gondon. Discussion.
Just as a point of information, all those changes that, because they've married them, all those changes will be reflected in the West Street Handbook. Is that correct, Ms. Katerat?
Yes. In addition to that, a few other things were brought to my attention. For example, on page four, at West Street, the group of teachers that is named as Interventionist/ T-shirt Teachers. If you look at the Charlton Street document, it's delineated by like Title One, Interventionist or Instructional Resource Specialist. And my intention is to make ours match that as well. Obviously with different names, but, so that you can tell really where people are.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? One opposed. Motion passes. Moving on to vote to approve the South Beach Middle High School 2015-2016 Handbook Supplement. There are motion.
So moved.
There's a motion by Dr. Page, seconded by Mr. Jovan. Discussion. Ms. Quinney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had, regarding student discipline, I know that's been a conversation that has
Can you just reference what page?
It doesn't have a page.
Oh, it doesn't?
Header five. Sorry. It's about, one, two, three, four pages from the back. About... Um, the way, in reading it, there's no progressive anything, like profanity. If you use profanity, consequences may include office detention, in-school suspension, or out-of-school suspension for up to two days, depending upon circumstance. And then five days of suspension, out-of-school suspension, depending on severity and situation. I just have concerns in reading all of our school attendance issues, suspension rates, all this, that it doesn't seem to encourage students staying in class. Not that inappropriate language is acceptable, like that first paragraph I understand completely. But moving into like, if you swear out loud, is that a difference than swearing at somebody? And what are the consequences of that? And I think as a parent, if my kid swears, and then the kid over there swears, my kid gets two days of suspension, and that kid gets an office detention, there's no clear expectation of what warrants what.
Well, I think that that paragraph lists the consequences progressively. May include, as well as the chart at the end of this section, also lists, lists the possible consequences. I'd like to retain the ability to have both Mr. Kakese and Mr. Wallace issue discipline depending on circumstance, because circumstance would include things like, is this person or is this student a habitual offender? Was the student directing profanity at a staff member? Was the student just using the word as an adjective? So it allows for them to address the circumstance. That's why that language is in there.
At the, on that chart that you referenced, it states that, "The list is suggested, does not limit administration's ability to deliver consequences, nor does it imply progressive order of consequences," which kind of contradicts how that's
It doesn't need, right, because we need to retain the right to jump to a more severe consequence should the specific situation warrant it. I can't be locked into progressive discipline for a fighting, for example. Ideally, yes, the first incident of fighting, you might receive an, in-school suspension for the rest of the day if there's no severe harm done. But if the first incident of fighting involves a student who seriously maims another student or punches a staff member in the face, then I need to retain the right to refer that student directly to a Saturday or a multiple day out of school.
And then my other concern, under the SIP School Program, the last paragraph, I guess before the chart, "If a student misses a SIP session, the student will serve an additional SIP session. If a student misses a second SIP session, the student and his or her parents will be required to meet with the principal or assistant principal and the school resource officer prior to returning to school. Further consequences, whatever." I just, that's concerning to me in that the SIP program is an effort to keep kids in school and not suspend them. We're saying that if for some reason you aren't able to walk from wherever you live to your session, or you're not able to get a ride, or whatever, twice, then you're not allowed back in school until that, so that's
Right. So that would be
In and of itself is
That would be correct. That would mean that that Saturday morning, we would have the list, we would know if the child missed one or two times. Part of what Mr. Bliss and I will do that Saturday is to actively reach out to that family in the present, not wait till Monday morning, and find out why that child hasn't attended the SIP session. Because we would have notified the parent ahead of time that that child is expected to attend that Saturday. It is incumbent upon the child, or the parent, or both, to get that child there. This child is in SIP because this child either habitually violated a policy or an expectation, or there was a severe violation, and we went directly to SIP school. The child needs to accept that responsibility. We can't have this both ways. We can have that child in school and have this alternative program, but like Mr. Jovan said, we need to preserve the learning environment for everybody who wants to learn. So it is expected that that child and that child's parents get that child there on that Saturday. Should they fail to do that twice in a row, then yes, that child, that child's parents, it's incumbent upon them to then come in and meet with us and discuss what further consequences might be. We can't let it go. If we're gonna impose this consequence, we have to hold the child to meeting this consequence.
And it also, if I may, it also allows administration the opportunity to tease out, it's actually more in the spirit of the progressive approach to discipline, because it allows us to then have that meeting and to insist on the meeting. Not, not to say that that meeting would happen the Wednesday afternoon of that following week. We're talking about Monday morning, the expectation would be that we would meet with the family in the office, find out exactly what happened, and, and where are we going from here? So it helps to actually close that, the likely communication gap that could occur if you just simply said to a student, "Walk back to the building."
Which is in line with our current reentry practice following suspensions. That student and that student's parents do need to meet for reentry prior to the student's readmission.
Just some of the reasons for SIP, like unexcused tardies, missing class, like, if we want kids to be in school, and then we're saying, "Well, you missed Saturday." You're being punished for not being, it's, I just think, I'm very concerned about how this will impact our attendance rates, potential dropout rates.
Well, it should, it should make the attendance rates better, because we're saying to that child, instead of receiving an out-of-school consequence, or even an in-school suspension where they're removed from the learning environment and placed in a separate support room, instead of those consequences, this gives us a different alternative, which keeps that child in school, in the learning environment, Monday to Friday, and then provides for them to come an extra day on Saturday.
And I completely understand that, and I think having an alternative is fantastic. My concern is that if that child is, has a SIP for missing, and then they've shown up all five days, they're actively engaged in a learning environment, and they're unable to make it one Saturday, and then they're assigned another Saturday, and they're unable to make it, but they're engaged in learning and being in class, then they're not allowed to return to school. That's where my concern lies.
No, I think to that point, Ms. Quinney, we would be able to make an arrangement. I mean, it's, it would be our hope, when I did this years ago, oftentimes, and parents were good about saying on a Friday afternoon, they would say, "Is there any possibility that this could be rescheduled for such and such a reason?" And we were able to work with families in that way. So it's not, it's not to have this militaristic approach, but to have this, you know, we want to be able to open the lines of communication between home and school.
Thank you.
Well, just a couple of points. I agree with the fact that we need to leave progressive discipline with the building principle. To that point, we've had this model for a number of years of, as to progressive discipline, and I've seen it abused with my own child at one time, many, many years ago, back in two thousand and five, who got in a, in a simple fight with somebody and was immediately suspended for two weeks. And I said, "Well, what about progressive discipline? How does that work?" And I went through the right appeal process to say, "Hey, look, there is appropriate," I was a police chief. It was like, "Hey, I agree, you have to have behavior, but it has to be progressive." So we have to leave that with our building principals. I, I think, to your point about keeping kids in school, like I said earlier, I'm all for keeping kids in school. What I think this School Committee is now saying to our building principals and our staff is that it's, it's, this is gonna be our culture. This is our expectations for student success. We expect you to be in school, and these are the consequences if you don't attend. If you don't behave, these are the consequences. And it starts from the top. It starts from us sending this message to the superintendent, who then sends it to the building principals, that this is the culture that we're gonna now move forward in. By doing that, the expectation is set, like we set many years ago at the high school, that these are the expectations. And then kids will rise to those expectations, and their parents will know what those expectations are. And there's always room for negotiation with the parents to work those issues out. But I fully support sending this message right down to, this is the culture that the South Beach Public Schools are gonna embrace going forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any further discussion?
Dr. Page? Just a couple of things. One, on, I don't even, unfortunately, the page, the pages aren't numbered. But that has to do with absences due to illness. It says, "If parents do not call in to get assignments, it's the child's responsibility to see their teachers within three days of their return to school to get any makeup work." I just questioned the three days. I mean, do you really want a kid to wait three days after they come back to school to go to their teachers and go, "Hey, I wanna make up what I missed now, six days ago," if they were out for three days? You know, I'm just wondering if, you know, you might wanna think about changing that to something more reasonable, like when the day they return to school, get the missed assignments or something. But anyway, just a suggestion.
Or even if possible electronically communicate, send an email to the teacher.
Yeah, just a suggestion for that, that timeline. Couple of other things, I think some of this is probably cosmetic, but I'm not sure. On the Mass Core requirements, where the header says in the second column, SPS graduations requirements 12 slash 13, is that the graduation requirements of the years 2012, 13? Is that what's meant there?
Sorry, Dr. Page?
No, that just reflected the implementation of the Mass Core, but we can update so that it's clear.
Okay.
Yep.
And under the arts, we have none where Mass Core says one unit. So is that, if we're complying with Mass Core, don't we have to require one unit of arts?
Yeah, that is most definitely an oversight. It's out of compliance. It just probably wasn't updated.
And then, I guess, same, where you have requirement, same thing, I guess, applies to the foreign language in the arts, where you have blanks under SMHS requirements in the far right. I don't know whether, you know, those need to be filled in with some kind of requirements that we might have, specific to us, for the foreign language in the arts for Mass Core. That was.
Prince Worrles, do you mind taking that under advisement? Just making sure that chart's reflective of our graduation requirements?
Yep.
That would be.
Okay. Yes, I guess my question was that, you know, where you have these exceptions, exceptions we made to those students who have not taken foreign language due to prior SPS graduation requirements, however, students who have not taken the foreign language should have additional two units completed in electives and other core classes. Is that outdated, or is that currently applicable? Because I think the Mass Core, we're into the full cycle now, right? So that's probably outdated language.
If, if I could go back to the first question now that I've, I'm sorry, found the location. What that chart represents, the first chart, is the SPS graduation requirements, and again, that year does need to be updated. The SMHS requirements are where we have specific, either additional, not requirements, but additional course prescriptions, for example, what they take during that year.
Okay.
So that's why the chart, and could you go to the, so that's the first question, but I'll see if we can make it clearer. And could you say, answer, just ask your latest question again while I'm here?
Yeah, the, now, on the next page, you have a couple of.
Can I just ask a, to that, so the first column, I'm sorry, I, SPS graduation requirements.
That's Southbridge Public Schools.
Right, so that was before the Mass Core requirements, was my understanding. And then the SMHS requirements are what were required, so that first column is null and void.
Right, right, so we're going to go with the Mass Core at this point, which has now been implemented, so, right, that column 12, 13 is now outdated. So we go with the, the Mass Core, and then there are specific SMHS prescriptions, I guess you might call them?
It may actually be helpful, if, if in fact, the graduation requirements are Mass Core compliant, then we might just want, we may just want to list our, our graduation requirements and footnote it to say, our graduation requirements are consistent with Mass Core and eliminate the whole chart.
Yeah, we need to clean this up, and I'm also noticing that there's an SMHS requirement change with the science, because we're going to the physics in grade nine, and I just, just caught that.
Yeah, great.
So that's, yeah, guidance does need to look at this again.
And just to follow up to that, just your asterisks that are on the next page, I guess for that table, are probably outdated as well.
Right, I'm going to have it guided to the whole chart then, Dr. Page.
And then other than that, I basically, I'll leave these with the superintendent, just some formatting things that I happened to notice, and the line spacing changes throughout, I think, probably just, probably just a result of cut and paste or copy paste. That's all I have, thank you.
Any further discussion?
One more thing, sorry. Do we still have a French Honor Society?
It is being reinstated this year, yes.
Okay.
Yep, it was defunct due to lack of eligibility. Yep.
One more, sorry, sorry, Mr. Chair.
Under dress code.
Yep.
Anytime you're trying to get people to do something, I don't like it when the word "should" is used instead of "must." So, because it, it's like, you know, I don't know what, your students are probably like ours at WPI, they read a syllabus like a contract. And so if you say "should," well, it doesn't say I have to, right? So where it says coats, gloves, hats, and other types of, other garments should be stored in lockers during school hours. I'm just a suggestion, do you want to change that to must be stored?
Or shall.
Or shall.
Shall.
Shall. I think that was all I had. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Jovan?
I'll defer to Mr. Bishop if he has questions.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Jovan. Through the chair to Mrs. Wills. Do we have the capacity to have every student taking two units of foreign language?
Yes.
We do, so.
Oh, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, just a point of clarification, are we voting to approve this with the proviso that all these changes will be made?
Housekeeping items?
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? I'd just like to make a comment to the educational leadership team, administrators. I see a cultural change already, and it's one of the biggest complaints I heard during the campaign was behavior, discipline, get it in line, and this is across the district. So I think that the school committee here is very supportive of, of the leadership team and the superintendent, and I think you gotta keep the pedal to the metal and keep going with it. I think we can get a grip in our arms around this disciplinary problem that we're experiencing. It's not just in Southbridge, it's a social issue that we have to deal with, and I think you're going to do a fine job with it, and we're behind you. Thank you. No further discussion? All those in favor of the middle high school? Opposed? Want opposed? Moving on, it's a typo in the next line, but I'll correct it. Vote to confirm the chairman and the superintendent's search committee. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Jovan. For the public, I'd just like to read the names, I know it's on the website, I know it's been handed out and emailed. Jill Condon will be the chairman and member of the school committee. Bill Bishop, Scott Lazo, Amy Allen, Magnin, Anthony Kacase, Courtney Brusso, Terry Colagnesi, Enrique Sanchez, Barbara Teaberry, alternate, Sabrina Rios, and Linda Doni. Any discussion? Ms. Quinney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, in looking at the list, there are, the only person that ha, there's only one person on the list that has students that are currently students of the district, and that is a little concerning to me. I know that this took place in a short, the window was very short over the summer, and families may have been away, and nothing went home because kids weren't in school. I think it may benefit us to extend the ability for parents to be on the committee, as I think at this stage of the game, they are one of the greatest stakeholders in who our superintendent is moving forward. So I personally would like to see more parents have a seat at the table, and also maybe people from other buildings. I know that it was opened up, and these are the people that came forward, and I understand that, but I, I just think in the spirit of being open, transparent, and letting the community truly be involved, I think we're very short on parent involvement in this search committee at this time.
Any other discussion? No further discussion? Could I have a roll call, please? I'll request that.
Mrs. Condon?
Yes.
Mr. Jovan?
Yes.
Mr. Lazo?
Yes.
Dr. Page?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
No.
Mr. Bishop?
Yes.
Five yes, one no.
Motion passes. Moving on to agenda item P, the June 1st, 2015 budget and sub, and sub-budget and finance subcommittee.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Go ahead.
Thank you. To the administrative cabinet, thank you for being here, the hour is late. Thank you for coming to present your handbooks. Please go home if you'd like to. If you'd like to camp out, more than welcome. But thank you, we appreciate, we know the hour is late. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you. Sorry about that. So moved.
There's a motion, there's, there's a second. There's a motion, a second. There's a very interesting document that we have here. Anybody that's not at the meeting doesn't vote, so just abstain. Discussion, additions, corrections, or deletions to those minutes? If there are none, all those in favor? Opposed? Abstention? Two?
There were only two subcommittee members on the subcommittee, so. There were only two subcommittee members on that subcommittee, Ms. Condon and myself, so.
I have to abstain.
Yes.
Well, we're voting minutes. We're only voting minutes at the meeting, so.
Okay, moving on to.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Condon?
Thank you. At this time, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda and to add an item Q to include the high school principal position and associated job description. Vote to approve.
A second?
There's a motion, a second. Discussion.
That's two.
Putting it on the agenda. All those in favor? Opposed? It's now on the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the high school principal job description?
So moved.
There's a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
And Mr. Jovan? Discussion. Ms. Condon?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to the superintendent on the job description, just to add in, similar to what we did in the middle school associate principal job description, management of nine through 12 of the school, and also on the second page, under extracurricular and community involvement, just a typo there that should say, grade nine through 12 students assists in cafeteria supervision for grades nine through 12 students. That was the only corrections that I would recommend.
I caught those, and thank you very much. Do we note it?
Any further discussion? No further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous, all present?
No, I've got abstain.
One abstention.
I've got abstain on that, please.
Moving on to new, unfinished business? Is there anything on the unfinished business? No unfinished business? Moving on to new business. A, to review, the homeschool appeal has been remedied, so it's no longer on the agenda.
Right, a further research, and after consultation with council, the respect to the matter, as recent as this afternoon, the matter as written under your policy disallows an appeal process for a homeschool situation to come before the school committee. So administration has levied a decision on this particular matter, and that decision will need to stand by way of policy as established by the committee. Thank you.
Anything else on the new business? If there's nothing on the new business, moving on to agenda item number 11, next meeting date. Next regularly scheduled school committee meeting will be held on August 25th, 2015, at 7:00 PM in the council chamber. Just a footnote, point of information, there'll be a committee of the whole meeting on August 17th, 2015, at 7:00 PM in room 100 at the old high school. That will be a meeting for the school committee to give the parameters and the expectations of the search committee. Moving on to.
Mr. Chair, I'll be unavailable on August 7th. I will respectfully request that I be excused.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, through you, just a question. Should the members of the search committee plan on attending that meeting next week?
They can, not mandatory. I'd suggest it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Moving on to, I'm sorry, Ms. Condon?
Thank you. Just a question for you regarding that meeting as well. I know we had discussed sending a survey home to the teachers as well as family members, and I would ask that, on that agenda, the school committee discuss those survey questions, because I feel that the best time possibly to send that survey home would be at the open house, when the family members are present. So if we could add that item to the agenda, to discuss those survey questions, and then that would be great.
We will also add the agenda item that's been postponed. I will talk to Mr. Bliss, there was an item that was postponed tonight that.
Football?
Was it football?
Football would go to the 8/25 agenda?
Yeah.
I think we were talking about the 17th, we were moving the item, oh, with respect to the school resource officer, definitely.
That's it, the resource officer will be on, because we have to get it done before we open school. Okay, members forum, agenda item number 12. Ms. Quinney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, two years ago, ran for school committee in the hopes of making a positive change in the education of students in the school district. It is apparent, based upon all of the data that has been presented to us, that my efforts were unsuccessful, as well as the current climate and disregard for policies, procedures, and then sometimes the law, the bloodsport that is Southbridge politics is beyond the scope of my abilities at this time, in that doing things the right way for the right reasons is apparently not how this committee is functioning at this time, and I no longer want to be a part of that. To that point, I would like to thank so many teachers, administrators, and parents who have put in tireless efforts to move forward in providing students with the excellent education that our students deserve. I also would thank all the people that I've worked with along the way for their support. But I really don't feel like politics has a place in education, and we have 2,200 students who are sitting in classrooms. And my hope for all of you in the school district is that the, whatever means necessary that you feel are required to get students the education that they deserve, I wish you all the success in that, because truly, your success in getting that for students will be the success of the district, the teachers, and this community. So I will be resigning from the school committee for those reasons, and in an effort to hope to have some accountability for this board, at least from a legal perspective, I'm presenting to you Chairman Lazo two open meeting law violation complaints for the record at this time. So I hope for an excellent school year ahead for everyone, and I hope all the efforts of the school district and school committee lead to a successful school year, movement out of Level 4, and success and preparedness for all of our students in career and college readiness. Thank you.
As chairman of the school committee, I would just like to say, volunteer work is sometimes a thankless job, but I would like to say thank you very much for your time served on school committee. It's often tough, and indifference of opinions do happen, but I would just like to say thank you for your years of service.
Thank you.
Anything else under members forum, please? Mr. Jovan?
No, I'd like to thank Ms. Quinney for service to the community. I can understand how much time it takes, it takes a lot of time on a family, and I do want to say that we all try to make the decisions in the best interest of the district. Sometimes we do have a difference of opinion. I'm, I'm actually sad to see you leave, because the debate we had tonight is a healthy debate. It's different points of view. We shouldn't all rubber stamp things that go forward. There's, there's, it's great to have questions and probe, and I appreciated the information that you provided tonight, and it would have been nice to work with you throughout the year, because I truly believe all of us on this dais want to move this district forward. And, you know, sometimes process, people have differences of opinion on how process should work, but thank you for your service, and I wish you had stayed, but really, sincerely, I do mean thank you for your service.
Anybody else under members forum? Dr. Page?
I would also like to thank Ms. Quinney for her service on the school committee, and wish you all the best for the, for the future. One thing I would like to say quickly to, actually more or less to the district leadership team who is gone now, regarding the, I was very pleased to see some of the disciplinary issues addressed in the, in the handbooks this time. I really, really hope that we can cultivate that culture right, starting from day one, when the building's open, and get the students into that sort of mindset of education right at the beginning. That, to me, has been the big, we can write all the policy we want, we can have all the handbooks we want, it's a matter of enforcing it. And so, and that's really something I think is going to be paramount to focus on as the doors open this year. Thank you.
Anything else? Ms. Condon?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just as the Desi was presenting their report, I just kind of made a couple of bullet points to follow up, if we can make them as action items, to have that presentation on the to follow up, if we can make them as action items, to have that presentation on the math curriculum, the map update, ELA and science map status from that grades nine through 12, and just if, as a committee, if different people aren't on certain subcommittees, if we could just share those minutes with the other members, just so they can be up to date, once those minutes are approved from the certain subcommittees, to keep everyone up to date, would be a recommendation. Thank you.
Anything else on the members forum? If no further discussion, we're moving on to executive session. Agenda item number 13, A, pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, C, 30A, 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for the negotiations with non-union personnel, to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. One, interim superintendent contract, two, supervisor of maintenance in facilities contract, and three, non-union personnel FY16 salaries.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second. Roll call?
Mr. Jovan? I'm sorry, Mr. Lazzo? With the proviso that we'll reconvene in open session for the...
I was going to announce that after the vote.
Well, that's usually part of the motion, Mr. Lazzo. It's usually that it, and the committee will reconvene in open session for the purposes of adjournment only.
Reconvene for the sole, sole issue of adjournment?
Mr. Jovan?
Yes.
Mr. Lazzo?
Yes.
Dr. Page?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Bishop?
Yes.
Mrs. Condon?
Yes.
Six yes.
Thank you, enter into the executive session.